Good evening and welcome to the City of Commerce City City Council Meeting, May 2nd, 2016. Would the Clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Ford?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Bullock?
Here.
Councilman Douglas?
Present.
Councilwoman Elliott?
Present.
Councilman McElDowney? Councilman Diaz?
Here.
Councilwoman Carson?
Here.
Councilman Teeter?
Here.
Councilman Amador? Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. For the record, we have two council members missing this evening, Mr. McElDowney and Mr. Amador. I'm open for a motion to excuse their absences. Mr. Bullock?
Move the excuse to two councilmen that aren't present?
Thank you. Mr. Teeter?
Second.
A motion is second to have those two members be excused from tonight's meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. They are excused from this evening's meeting. For the record, everyone else is here. Next item on the agenda is an executive session that is slated to go from 6 o'clock until about 6:45. Is there a motion to go into executive session? Councilwoman Elliott?
So moved.
Mr. Teeter?
Second.
A motion is second to go into executive session. For what reason? Councilwoman Elliott?
I apologize. Executive session pursuant to CRS 24-6-402 (4E). For the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations concerning incentives for several potential economic development projects within the city.
Thank you. I have a motion is second. We know what it's about. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. We will go into executive session, plan to be back out around 6:45 to go through the rest of our regular agenda. Thank you all for being here. And if you want a short break, you can kind of count on about 6:45.
Good evening and welcome to the City Council meeting this evening of May 2, 2016. Sorry for the delay, we were in executive session, but we are back now to take care of all the rest of the business at hand this evening. The meeting's already been called to order and the role has already been taken. So tonight, we have a special guest joining us to sing the National Anthem, following the saying of the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you please all rise for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Now, if I could get Ms. Heather LaCrew, will you please come up to the dais? Heather is a resident of Commerce City and will be sharing her talents at the upcoming Little Bridges Rodeo and the Commerce City Memorial Day Parade, so take it away.
Thank you. Oh, say, can you see, by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars, through the perilous fight, o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave, o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
We should do that more often in our council meetings, to tell you the truth. So, we're going to start off with the audience introduction. We're going to allow the audience to introduce themselves, if staff would please pass around the microphones to allow that to happen.
Heather LaCrew.
Danny Thomas.
Betty Thomas.
Rochelle McMurtry, Home Builders Association of Metro Denver.
David Yost.
Walter Grayden.
Lopon Shangolo.
Carol Martinez.
David Soucy.
Chris Thompson.
Ellen Haug.
Brian Chalas.
Marisela Salas.
Martha Zamora.
Emanuel Zamora.
Thank you.
María Azubiate.
Reina Soria.
Isela Lozano.
María Porras.
Rocío Rocha.
Jesús Méndez.
Abigail Méndez.
Cristina Ruiz.
Guadalupe Villalobos.
Alejandra Pérez Urcozki.
Rhonda Hathaway, Commerce City Rotary.
George Mayby, Commerce City Rotary.
Sharon Mayby, Commerce City Rotary.
Michael Hicks, Adam City High School Rotary.
Alexis Gonzalez.
Maria DeAndre, Public Works.
Patrick Buckley, Building Safety.
Michelle Hill, Economic Development.
Fernando Chávez, Adam City High School Interact Club and Commerce City Youth Commission.
Lizette Zamora, Adam City High School Interact Club and Youth Commission.
Nayli Olivas, Adam City Interact Club and Commerce City Youth Commission.
Paola Chávez, Adam City High School Interact Club, as well as Commerce City Youth Commission.
Nayli Agustín Lasoya, Adam City High School Interact Club.
Angela Haben, Metro North Chamber of Commerce.
Cinco Asahi Food.
Paul Juan Asahi Food.
Vicky Lynn, Asahi Food.
Will Consegra, Economic Development Division.
Chris Chavez with the U.S. Small Business Administration.
Michelle Claymore, Economic Development Director.
Again, thank you all for being here. It's a pleasure to have the room full and all kinds of activity happening here in the city. First item on the agenda is Proclamations and Recognitions. Tonight, we will be doing a proclamation for the Small Business Week, National Small Business Week proclamation. I'd like to invite Economic Development Director Michelle Claymore, President of Ashi Foods, Paul Juan, and U.S. Small Business Administrator, Region 8 Office, Regional Communications Director Christopher Chavez forward to accept the proclamation. So if you come up to the podium, please. I'd like to ask for a motion on the proclamation. Mr. Bullock?
So moved.
Let's see, Mr. Teeter?
Second.
A motion and a second. Will the City Attorney please read the proclamation?
Proclamation. Whereas the City of Commerce City joins the U.S. Small Business Administration in promoting and recognizing Small Business Week during May 1 through 7, 2016, and whereas from storefront shops to high-tech startups, small businesses are the backbone of the city's economy, and whereas Commerce City- city's economy; and whereas Commerce City has approximately 1,200 businesses and over 80% of them have less than 20 employees; and whereas America's 28 million small businesses create nearly two out of three jobs in the country; and whereas the city achieves City Council's goal to develop a balanced and vibrant economy to improve socioeconomic status, and small businesses are a crucial mechanism for socioeconomic advancement; and whereas the City of Commerce City supports and joins in this national effort to help America's small businesses do what they do best: grow their business, create jobs, and ensure that our communities remain as vibrant tomorrow as they are today. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of Commerce City honors Small Business Week and all the city's small businesses for their entrepreneurial spirit that keep the city, state, and national economy growing stronger. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause this seal to be affixed on the second day of May, 2016. City of Commerce City, Colorado, Shawn Ford, Mayor.
All right. Have a motion and a second. The proclamation's been read. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. The proclamation is approved. Well, first, I would like to turn it over, if there's any comments or discussion about the small business. Michelle?
Thank you, Mayor. So, National Small Business Week is a week where contributions of small businesses are recognized through various programs and activities. And since over 80% of Commerce City's businesses have less than 20 employees, we would like to thank them and recognize their contributions to the city with this proclamation. Here tonight to help represent all of the wonderful small businesses in Commerce City is Mr. Paul Guan, who is President of Asahi Foods. Thanks for being here, Paul. The National Week is sponsored by the U.S. Small Business Administration, and Mr. Christopher Chavez, our Regional Communications Director for the SBA Region 8 Office, is also here to help us recognize Commerce City's small business, and he would like to say just a quick word.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. This is our sixth proclamation in two days, and small business is a good news story. Everybody likes small business. They create most of the American jobs. They create most of the jobs in Commerce City. So, it's a story that everyone can get along with, and everybody understands and everybody believes in, and we're very happy to be working with Commerce City. Michelle and her staff have been wonderful, and we hope to create a better relationship and a larger relationship between the SBA and the City of Commerce City over the next year, and look forward to doing many, many more of these in the future. So, once again, thank you for your support, and congratulations to all of the small businesses in the great city of Commerce City, and thank you for your time tonight.
Absolutely. Thank you for being here. Small businesses are a huge part of our community from its inception. So, I would like to ask the council to please join me down front to take a picture while we hand off the proclamation. All right, now, we're gonna do something a little bit different than normal. We're gonna be doing a recognition of Commerce City youth and graduating seniors from Adam City High School. So, I would like to invite the interim Director of External Affairs, Michelle Halsted, forward to provide information on local youth and graduating seniors. Michelle?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Tonight, City Council is recognizing some amazing youth in our community, and I'm gonna share a little bit of information about them before they come forward, and then we have a little certificate for them that my colleague Maria will help hand out as well. Since its creation in 2012, the Commerce City Youth Commission has really flourished with the adoption of the Youth Master Plan, increased participation in community events, and they've proudly served Commerce City. Six of our commissioners this year are graduating this May, including Armando Boraza, Edgar Varela, Estrella Romero, Fernando Chavez, Nayeli Alivas, and Yaselin Rodriguez. Will those commissioners please come forward? All of our youth are heading to post-secondary opportunities, with some of them also receiving some very prestigious awards. Fernando, for example, is a Betcher Scholar and the first in the University of Colorado Boulder history to participate in the Betcher, the Pootska Scholar? Pootskap? I can't say it. Say it again for me.
Pooksta.
There we go. Scholar, the Presidential Leadership Class, and the Honors Engineering Scholarships Program. Let's give them a round of applause and thank them for their service. Next, we'll invite up the Suncor Boys and Girls Club. Now, the club opened its doors last August and substantially increased the organization's capacity within Commerce City, boasting 439 club members and a waiting list. Boys and Girls Club of Metro Denver annually recognizes its members with a Youth of the Year Award, and tonight, we have the Suncor Club's two award nominees. The Junior Award winner, Laban. Come on up.
Come on up.
Now, he is 13 years old and wants to study criminal justice at the Colorado State University at Pueblo, and Carol is our Senior Award winner. She's 17, committed to her academics, and is planning to study Journalism and International Studies at New York University. Both members were recognized at the organization's annual gala in March. Congratulations. Next, the Adams 14 Foundation awarded 10 scholarships valued at $100,000 to 10 deserving graduating seniors at its 16th Annual 14er Fest last week, and we're honored to have some of those youth join us tonight, but I'll share with you all of their plans. So, Ivan Sayes Pardo Omar will be attending Colorado State University to study Construction Management. Abigail Mendez will be studying English at the Colorado State University. Alexis Gonzalez will attend the University of Colorado to study English and become a teacher, and if you can come up when your name's called, that would be fantastic.
Just don't sit out there in the audience and hide. We need you out there.
Yeah, come on up.
Fernando is studying Aerospace Engineering at the University of Colorado. Mari Salas, there she is, is gonna study Psychology and Education Therapy at Metropolitan State University. Uriel Dominguez will study Biology at CSU. Felipe de la Cruz is attending the Community College of Denver to study Architecture and Construction. Ray Cano, where's Ray? There he is, is studying Electrical and Computer Engineering at the Community College of Denver. Daisy Vias is going to be attending CCD as well to study Criminal Justice. Anthony Salazar plans to study Civil and Computer Engineering at CCD, and Stephanie Wolf will attend Adam State University to study Business Management and Accounting. So, these are just a handful of the great youth in our community. So, congratulations to the recent scholarship winners. So, I know we wanna take a picture, and we also have a presentation from our Interact Club, but I don't know if there's any council members who wanna make comments to these folks before we go up and take the picture, and then we can continue on to do the Interact presentation, if that's okay.
You know, I would start off by just saying, hey, you know, it's really great, in the community that I grew up in, to the same school district that I graduated from, to see the youth in our community striving to improve their opportunities is a big, big, big deal for me. We want you to come back to Commerce City with your degrees, and we want you to be professionals, and we want you to take our seats someday, serving this community. To me, that's important, that we're growing our own. So, thank you all for doing such a great job in school and getting the scholarships, and we look forward to seeing you back in this community as active adults. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else? Let's see, Mr. Bullock?
Everything I was gonna say, the mayor just said, so I don't see why I'm gonna repeat it, but I'm just so proud of all of you, because this isn't easy, what you've done. It takes work, and the reason I know this is because I didn't put in all that work, and so, for me to be sitting up here, I know that any one of you can be sitting up here in any time and take my place. Just wait for a while, okay? So, I'm out of office.
Tomorrow's good. Challenge him. All right, Councilwoman Carson?
Well, thank you all for coming. I can't tell you how proud we are of you. That's the reason we wanted you here tonight. It's been a long, hard process for you to get where you're at, and we definitely appreciate it that you've been very active in your community. Some of you I know better than others, and I know what your community does mean to you. So, thank you, and we wish you all great success, and as Mr. Bullock said, and the mayor, please come back to the community when you are done with your education. And for those out there listening, this is the first of many, and we did not forget our children in the north of 27J. So, as this program continues to grow, we will represent both school districts here. But honestly, I can't tell you how proud we are to have you here. Thank you.
All right, now, if everybody would join me down front to take a picture with these young men and women.
If any of you parents wanna take a picture, because we can hold the phone for another five seconds. All right. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Mayor and members of council, the Adam City High School Interact Club is sponsored by the Commerce City Rotary, and they're doing very important work to advocate for mental health awareness. We'd like to show a short video before we introduce the Rotary members here today, as well as members of the Interact Club.
When we say someone's crazy...
Or they're so weird...
We are perpetuating stereotypes...
It's time as a community...
We take on change...
It's time as a community...
We start the conversation...
It's time as a community...
We talk about it... What is it? It is living in a world of mental health challenges and the associated stigma...
Our generation can make it happen...
Our generation has the power to make a difference...
Our generation will stop the stigma... Stop the stigma now!
So, I'd now like to invite the Rotarians and the Impact Club members forward to say a few more words.
I thought we were showing the video.
Well, we're doing, we're speaking first, then we're showing the video.
I got you. Oh, okay. There we go.
Don't worry.
Come on up. Fernando, everybody else, it's okay. Rotary members, anybody that has anything they want to say, now's the time.
Awesome. Well, thank you guys very much for having us here today. Of course, as you guys already know, my name is Fernando Chavez, and I am the president of the Adam City High School Interact Club for this past year, and wow, it was a long journey. It was, I learned so much. We did a lot of community service, not only local, but global as well, and this video was something that we wanted to dive into, just as Rotary did. Rotary is trying to create a movement to stop the stigma, like we mentioned, and mental health issues, or at least spread awareness, and that's something that we wanted to help with as well. Us, as the youth, we wanted to show our support through this video, and I want to introduce to you our members that are here today as well. So, Lisette Zamora, she is gonna be the secretary for next year. Then, we have Nayeli, she's a graduating senior too, and we have Paola Chavez, who happens to be my sister too. I don't know if we look alike a little bit, maybe? And she's gonna be the president next year, so I know she'll be taking on this journey, and we will continue fighting. We will stop the stigma, like we said. And yeah, thank you, guys. I want to introduce to you guys specifically Lisette. She was the producer of the video that we will be showing next, and this video involved almost all our Interact Club members, as well as our sponsors, and Rotarians as well. So, we're very proud of it. We know that we worked very hard throughout the whole year creating this video, and we hope that you guys like it so much. Just, I'm gonna have Lisette talk to you guys a little bit more about that. So, thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you, guys, for having the Commerce City Youth Commission, the Interact Club, everyone here, and having a recognition for all of them, so we appreciate that. The video that we are about to present next is an awareness that we made at Adam City High School. It was something that every member of the Interact Club contributed to, and it was really important for us to raise awareness for it, because in many cases, mental health isn't something that we haven't seen a lot of. We haven't seen a lot of awareness for it, but it is a very common thing. So, it was really important to do that. As I directed and edited the film, I mean, video, I noticed that, you know, this video is gonna make a big impact on our community, and hopefully, you guys will enjoy it as much as we enjoyed making it, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
My name is David. I'm 17 years old.
My name is Steve. I'm 17 years old.
My name's Laurel, and I'm 16.
My name's Cindy, and I'm 16 years old.
I'm the first chair saxophone, and I'm the quarterback of my football team.
Ryan was in 7th grade, and I was a junior in
and the Interact Club, everyone here and having a recognition for all of them. So, we appreciate that. The video that we are about to present next is an awareness that we made at Adams City High School. It was something that every member of the Interact Club contributed to and it was really important for us to raise awareness for it because in many cases, mental health isn't something that, that we haven't seen a lot of. We haven't seen a lot of awareness for it, but it is a very common thing. So, it was really important to do that. As I directed and edited the film, I mean video, we, I noticed that, you know, this video is gonna make a big impact on our community and hopefully you guys will enjoy it as much as we enjoyed making it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is David. I'm seventeen years old.
My name is Steve. I'm seventeen years old.
My name's Laurel and I'm sixteen.
My name's Cindy and I'm sixteen years old.
I'm the first chair saxophone and I'm the quarterback of my football team.
Ryan was in seventh grade and I was a junior in high school.
I didn't notice my one-way path into darkness.
When I was ten, I was mauled by my neighbor's visioned dog.
I have lots of friends. I have my girlfriend and a lot of people know me around the school.
I had lots of friends. Nothing was important for me anymore.
On Tuesday, November third, our parents left to work before we went walking to school.
It had gotten out of its backyard and I was walking home from school and I saw him. He saw me and he bolted towards me, scared me to death.
When I woke up, I saw Ryan already ready for school. Quiet, I thought to myself, okay? Ryan had already fixed me a bowl of cereal with toast.
It was around Thanksgiving, my junior year. My parents had announced that they were gonna give it a divorce.
I started faking being sick so I didn't have to go to school.
I spent several weeks in the hospital, recovering from the ripped skin, the bites, the stitches, the skin, the pain, all over my body.
After that, it was common for me and my friends to drink at parties.
I just wanted to be alone.
I started drinking alcohol, a lot more.
Now, I'm definitely afraid of dogs, all dogs.
We left for school at the same time. We walked down the street to the corner. I went left to school and he went right.
My grades are seriously taking a nosedive. My parents are not happy with me, but I really don't care anymore. It's not that important.
Vodka was my preferred choice. It was clear, no smell and I could fill my water bottle with it every day. I could drink all day and no one could tell me, could they?
I got out of my way to avoid them. I live in constant fear. I'm afraid. I'm afraid of a dog barking. I'm afraid of any dog. My grandma's little dog. I will not even get close to a dog. I freak out.
I came home after school and started doing my homework. Ryan was not home.
Before I knew it, eventually I started getting suspended from school. Mr. Bodine, one day, the gym teacher, he caught me passed out of the locker room.
My room's a mess, clothes are everywhere.
I figured Ryan got home and went to Billy's house. I didn't think much about it.
Of course, the principal was disappointed. I didn't care. My parents were pissed. Who cares? They're divorced.
I don't know why I'm usually just in sweats and t-shirts.
My parents came home from work and asked, "Where's Ryan at?" I hadn't seen him since he, since I got home. I thought he was with Billy.
I don't wanna feel this bad. I need a drink to take the edge off.
When I see a little or a big dog, my heart starts pounding.
My parents, they've been talking again, civilly, so I guess I started to feel better.
I sweat profusely. I can't breathe. I shake. I can't sleep. I cry.
Mom fixed dinner and Ryan was still not home. That's odd. He knows when dinner is usually done.
I stopped drinking at school. My grades were improving again, but that's all because I'm being monitored at school. But, I'm still the life of the party.
Mom called Billy's house. No, he wasn't there. Billy said Ryan was not at school today. He thought he stayed homesick.
I rarely leave my room. I spend too much time in there. I even eat my meals in there. All I want is to be alone and sleep.
I see a dog and I freeze. I can't function. I try to breathe slowly. I concentrate on my breathing. In, out.
She called some of his other friends and no one had seen him today. My mom went to Ryan's room and we heard a scream.
My friends don't even call me anymore. I don't blame them. If I were them, I wouldn't want to be around myself either.
Me and my dad ran to Ryan's room and there he was.
I know it's a dog, a little dog. Dogs are common pets. Everyone has a dog, right?
He was dead. He had been dead for hours. There was, there was nothing we could do. My dad called 911. The fire and police department all came, questioned me, especially me, about the last time I saw him, when we went to school. That's when, when I saw him last.
Everyone really wants to be my friend.
Everything irritates me. Why can't I function around them? It's been six years.
Before I knew it, family, neighbors and friends were all here. We have no words. He left us no note. He just left us. Why? Why? Why?
Girls really wanna be my friend. Why not? I'm the party guy.
This still can be happening to me.
We met with grief counselors right away and after the funeral. We met with mental health professionals to find a possible reason why, why Ryan would commit suicide.
Everything irritates me. My little brother, my little sister, my mom, my dad, even the neighbor's dog. What's wrong with me?
Come to find out, Ryan was being bullied in school. He, he mentioned it. Said his teacher was aware of it. He didn't seem too concerned. We also found out he gave Billy his Playstation and his favorite games. All my recollection is, I went left, he went right, right back to home. He was in a great mood that morning and I wondered, what the heck? He knew that morning what he was about to do. He knew. I didn't. Now, I have to live with guilt. If you ever need or feel the need to receive help, here's the suicide prevention hotline. One eight four 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 nine three T A L K.
Substance abuse has potentially harmful effects on the developing brain and its mental health.
When we talk about youth mental health challenges and disorders, we know it can begin in early childhood.
These disorders are not always well-understood by people who have never experienced a mental health challenge or disorder themselves or lived with a person experiencing a mental health disorder.
This is why it is so important to detect problems early and to ensure the person is properly treated and supported. Adolescence is a time of change and self-discovery and although it is different for every individual, there are some things that are common to all youth.
In the United States, half of all lifetime cases of mental illness begins by age fourteen.
It's sometimes difficult to tell whether a young person is developing or experiencing a mental health issue or disorder or simply going through normal changes because young people are changing rapidly already. So, some of the changes seen as mental health may go unnoticed.
Substance-induced disorders can also be a co-occurring disorder or precursor for other mental health issues or disorders. It can cover up depression, anxiety, or bipolar disorders later in life.
And there are long delays and sometimes decades between the onset of symptoms and when people seek treatment.
L G E E.
A, assess for risk of suicide or harm.
L, listen non-judgmentally.
G, give reassurance and information.
E, encourage appropriate professional help.
E, encourage self-help and other support strategies.
It's time to talk.
It's time for a change.
You are not alone. I'll listen. Let's talk.
Thank you guys very much. As you guys saw, we, we put a lot of effort into, into this video. All of those students are very courageous. They do go to our school and they are Interact members too. So, so it's special to, to have them be very courageous and, and present themselves in the video. So, now what I'm gonna do really quickly is, we're gonna be passing out some, some of these little cards that we have to you guys. It just talks a little bit more about our mission, not just ours but Rotary's as well. So, we'll be passing those out and thank you guys so much for having us today once again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to say, you know, this is important not just for us as elected officials and, and the people we come into contact in our community, the need to be aware regardless of where you work within the city. We, we've had trainings, made trainings available to all of the residents in Commerce City. But myself as a Rotarian and Mr. Bullock as the, will be the president of the Rotary Club in July, I believe.
Yep.
And with Rotary's message that we want to help tackle mental health, as you know, we've, we've been working very, very hard on, on many other things with Rotary. Mental health is one of those issues that people have turned a blind eye to for, for too long. And so, it means a lot for us to have the video that you've made to help us through Rotary and to help us in our community, to bring awareness to mental health and the mental health needs of our community. That when you see somebody that's struggling with something and it may not be a physical disability but a mental disability, we need to make, take note and make sure that we try our best to get them to the services that they need. So, you guys have, have helped us a lot and I think the work that you did to put this video together and the professional, professional format that it has in, in its entirety says plenty for, for you guys that, that worked on this and, and how professional you are and how much you will strive to achieve in your lifetime. So, thank you from the City Council very much for the efforts to help with the issue of mental health.
Thank you.
Fernando, before you go, for the audience, can you please tell us what Interact is?
Of course. So, Interact Club is part of Rotary and Interact Club is a club offered at Adams City High School where students can get involved at any age really. They can be either a freshman or a senior and we do a lot of community service around the community. We work very closely with Rotary. That is the reason why we have all the resources around us to really make an impact in our community. And the cool thing about that club is that it is the only club at Adams City High School that also does global community service and it's a hundred percent student-led. Like I tell you guys, I'm the president, I run every meeting, we all get together, we plan, we hear everyone's voice and we have a good time there too. So, one of the things that we also did was fundraising to send girls in Africa to school and that just popped out of my head one day because I was able to attend the Yale Young Global Scholars Program and that was at Yale University over the summer and I met a girl who, who wanted to do a program in her community and I told her a little bit about my Interact Club. We made that connection right away. She actually lives in New York right now, but she is from Ghana and she wanted to send girls her age to school because a lot of those girls were getting married at the age of like twelve or thirteen. So, I said, "Okay, let's connect. Let's connect with the Interact Clubs around, around the globe, around the U S, United States and, and let's make a fundraiser to send girls to Africa." And we came back here to, to Adams City High School. I presented this, this idea and, and next thing you know, we, we bought tons of chocolates, we sold them and we fundraised a lot of money and that money's going to her. So, that's just a, a peek of, of the things that we're doing at a global scale as well. And I encourage, if you guys know anyone going into, into Adams City High School, tell them about the Interact Club. I know it's, I don't know for what reason, usually students don't know a lot about it, but we do a lot of community service and leadership development as well. And I think I've grown so much from just being part of it and, and I think I'm ready to take that next step at T U Boulder and be a, a Rotaract. So, that's a similar club that they have over there. I think we enter not only a club but a whole community of people who are willing to devote their time to service and, and serve others, of course, which is our main goal. So, so that's what we do at Interact Club.
Thank you, of course.
And you know, you're being, you're being nice. You guys do a lot in the community as well. These, these kids will go to Madonna Plaza at, at the time of the holidays, whether it be to carve pumpkins with the seniors or what have you. They go over at the holidays and they spend time with our seniors in our community. They do the trick-or-treating thing at, at Adams City High School for the younger kids. They're very involved in community and not just with the schools. They are out in this community and they're, they're helping people in the community. So, I can't say enough about the Rotary-Interact. So, thank you Fernando.
Thank you guys so much.
And thank you to the Rotarians that showed up for the presentation tonight.
Yeah, I wanna specifically thank Rhonda. She is our, I would say, our liaison or sponsor of Interact Club. She's a Rotarian and wow, she has done an amazing job. I think if it wasn't for her, we would not be standing here right now. We would not be where we are. She is always behind us, encouraging us and, and giving us a ton of opportunities, not just only for us, but any opportunity that she finds out, she gives it to us and she's counting on us to distribute it around the whole school. So, I think Rhonda does an amazing job and I think we, if you guys can join me in, in a round of applause to, to Rhonda, she does a wonderful job. Thank you. Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. Couldn't start the meeting off better. We'll move into our next item, which is citizen communication. Let me see here. I'll have you all come up when I call your name. Need your name and address for the record. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes. And, and I know that I can tell already, there's one person on my list here that wants to speak about an, a public hearing that's coming up this evening. I would ask that you wait until the public hearing and make comment at that time. So, I will, I will hold off on calling you, but I will make sure you get a chance to speak during the public hearing. So, we'll start with Angela Haven. Please come forward. Good to see you Angela.
Thank you Mayor, excuse me, thank you Mayor Ford, Council members. I wanted to come here tonight to give you an update on the Metro North Chamber of Commerce. Actually, I've been with the chamber now a year and a half as president and CEO. And for those of you that are not familiar with the Metro North Chamber, just a little brief history, the Metro North Chamber actually began in nineteen fifty-nine as the Adams County Chamber. In the early eighties, the Westminster Chamber of Commerce and Adams County Chamber merged together to form what you know now as the Metro North Chamber of Commerce. We are a regional chamber of thirteen municipalities throughout Adams, Broomfield, parts of Weld and Jefferson County. Currently, we have a nine, nine hundred and fifty business members. We are a member-driven organization encompassing large, medium, small, and home-based businesses. As a Chamber of Commerce, we may maintain affordable dues for our membership. For those reasons, we look to our membership to drive the culture and momentum of the organization. The vitality and momentum of our chamber requires the injection of new membership. We look for a business that not only wants access to the major decision-makers in the region, but who can help shape and grow our organization so our region can receive the visibility and recognition that it deserves. Our region has a great story to tell. We need the voices of these businesses who want to be involved in writing that story today. Couple of things I wanted to share with you quickly is some accomplishments we've had in the last year. A year ago, there were just two employees, myself and my communications director. A year ago, we hired a membership manager and events planner. Six months ago, we hired an assistant and also a membership services person. So, now we are at four employees. We did over three hundred meetings and events last year in two thousand and fifteen with three employees average. We're a very busy chamber. Just recently, the Denver Business Journal announced that we are the fifth largest chamber in the state of Colorado. When I came on board as a recovering banker, I was in banking before I came to the chamber, I was very concerned with financial sustainability. Can't help it, I'm a conservative person and really was crunching the numbers. So far in two thousand and sixteen, we have made great strides and improvements in our financials. Our attendance in most of our programs are up thirty-five to fifty percent than what they were a year ago. One thing that's happening right now is when I came on board, we had two leads groups. Those are groups of businesses who get together and pass leads to each other and we, as the chamber, support that and help try to grow their business as well through those leads. We had two floundering leads groups when I started. We now have four. The fourth one that I'm speaking of, we are trying to get set up right now in Commerce City. We have twelve business members who want to start their leads group as soon as possible. Is my three minutes up? Okay. One of the other important priorities that we have or that we do with the chamber is our business and government affairs. We have legislative priorities. We have two lobbyists on staff to support our businesses, to give them a voice to our lobbyists so we can fight for those bills that are important to our-
Message that we want to help tackle mental health. As you know, we've been working very, very hard on many other things with Rotary. Mental health is one of those issues that people have turned a blind eye to for too long. And so it means a lot for us to have the video that you've made to help us through Rotary and to help us in our community, to bring awareness to mental health and the mental health needs of our community, that when you see somebody that's struggling with something, and it may not be a physical disability, but a mental disability, we need to take note and make sure that we try our best to get them to the services that they need. So you guys have helped us a lot, and I think the work that you did to put this video together and the professional format that it has in its entirety says plenty for you guys that worked on this and how professional you are and how much you will strive to achieve in your lifetime. So, thank you from the City Council very much for the efforts to help with the issue of mental health.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fernando, before you go, for the audience, can you please tell us what Interact is?
Of course. So, Interact Club is part of Rotary, and Interact Club is a club offered at Adams City High School where students can get involved at any age, really. They can be either a freshman or a senior, and we do a lot of community service around the community. We work very closely with Rotary. That is the reason why we have all the resources around us to really make an impact in our community. And the cool thing about that club is that it is the only club at Adams City High School that also does global community service, and it's 100% student-led. Like I tell you guys, I'm the president, I run every meeting, we all get together, we plan, we hear everyone's voice, and we have a good time there, too. So, one of the things that we also did was fundraising to send girls in Africa to school. And that just popped out of my head one day because I was able to attend the Yale Young Global Scholars Program, and that was at Yale University over the summer, and I met a girl who wanted to do a program in her community, and I told her a little bit about my Interact Club. We made that connection right away. She actually lives in New York right now, but she is from Ghana, and she wanted to send girls her age to school because a lot of those girls were getting married at the age of like 12 or 13. So, I said, "Okay, let's connect. Let's connect with the Interact Clubs around the globe, around the United States, and let's make a fundraiser to send girls to Africa." And we came back here to Adams City High School. I presented this idea, and next thing you know, we bought tons of chocolates, we sold them, and we fundraised a lot of money, and that money's going to her. So, that's just a peek of the things that we're doing at a global scholar as well. And I encourage, if you guys know anyone going into Adams City High School, tell them about the Interact Club. I know it's, I don't know for what reason, usually students don't know a lot about it, but we do a lot of community service and leadership development as well. And I think I've grown so much from just being part of it, and I think I'm ready to take that next step at T U Boulder and be a Rotary Act. So, that's a similar club that they have over there. I think we enter not only a club, but a whole community of people who are willing to devote their time to service and serve others, of course, which is our main goal. So, that's what we do at Interact Club.
Thank you, of course.
And you know, you're being nice. You guys do a lot in the community as well. These kids will go to Madonna Plaza at the time of the holidays, whether it be to carve pumpkins with the seniors or what have you. They go over at the holidays, and they spend time with our seniors in our community. They do the trick-or-treating thing at Adams City High School for the younger kids. They're very involved in community and not just with the schools. They are out in this community, and they're helping people in the community. So, I can't say enough about the Rotary-Interact. So, thank you, Fernando.
Thank you guys so much.
And thank you to the Rotarians that showed up for the presentation tonight.
Yeah. I want to specifically thank Rhonda. She is our, I would say, our liaison or sponsor of Interact Club. She's a Rotarian, and wow, she has done an amazing job. I think if it wasn't for her, we would not be standing here right now. We would not be where we are. She is always behind us, encouraging us, and giving us a ton of opportunities, not just only for us, but any opportunity that she finds out, she gives it to us, and she's counting on us to distribute it around the whole school. So, I think Rhonda does an amazing job, and I think we, if you guys can join me in a round of applause to Rhonda, she does a wonderful job. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Couldn't start the meeting off better. We'll move into our next item, which is citizen communication. Let me see here. I'll have you all come up when I call your name. Need your name and address for the record. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes. And I know that, I can tell already, there's one person on my list here that wants to speak about a public hearing that's coming up this evening. I would ask that you wait until the public hearing and make comment at that time. So, I will hold off on calling you, but I will make sure you get a chance to speak during the public hearing. So, we'll start with Angela Haven. Please come forward. Good to see you, Angela.
Thank you, Mayor, excuse me. Thank you, Mayor Ford, council members. I wanted to come here tonight to give you an update on the Metro North Chamber of Commerce. Actually, I've been with the chamber now a year and a half as president and CEO. And for those of you that are not familiar with the Metro North Chamber, just a little brief history, the Metro North Chamber actually began in 1959 as the Adams County Chamber. In the early 80s, the Westminster Chamber of Commerce and Adams County Chamber merged together to form what you know now as the Metro North Chamber of Commerce. We are a regional chamber of 13 municipalities throughout Adams, Broomfield, parts of Weld, and Jefferson County. Currently, we have 950 business members. We are a member-driven organization encompassing large, medium, small, and home-based businesses. As a Chamber of Commerce, we maintain affordable dues for our membership. For those reasons, we look to our membership to drive the culture and momentum of the organization. The vitality and momentum of our chamber requires the injection of new membership. We look for a business that not only wants access to the major decision-makers in the region, but who can help shape and grow our organization so our region can receive the visibility and recognition that it deserves. Our region has a great story to tell. We need the voices of these businesses who want to be involved in writing that story today. Couple of things I wanted to share with you quickly is some accomplishments we've had in the last year. A year ago, there were just two employees, myself and my communications director. A year ago, we hired a membership manager and events planner. Six months ago, we hired an assistant and also a membership services person. So, now we are at four employees. We did over 300 meetings and events last year in 2015 with three employees average. We're a very busy chamber. Just recently, the Denver Business Journal announced that we are the fifth-largest chamber in the state of Colorado. When I came on board as a recovering banker, I was in banking before I came to the chamber, I was very concerned with financial sustainability. Can't help it, I'm a conservative person and really was crunching the numbers. So far in 2016, we have made great strides and improvements in our financials. Our attendance in most of our programs are up 35% to 50% than what they were a year ago. One thing that's happening right now is, when I came on board, we had two leads groups. Those are groups of businesses who get together and pass leads to each other, and we, as the chamber, support that and help try to grow their business as well through those leads. We had two floundering leads groups when I started. We now have four. The fourth one that I'm speaking of, we are trying to get set up right now in Commerce City. We have 12 business members who want to start their leads group as soon as possible. Is my three minutes up? Okay. One of the other important priorities that we have or that we do with the chamber is our business and government affairs. We have legislative priorities. We have two lobbyists on staff to support our businesses, to give them a voice to our lobbyists so we can fight for those bills that are important to our businesses. This year, so far, legislative session is not over, but we've reviewed 125 bills. We've taken positions on approximately 70 of those bills. Also, we had a legislative briefing this last fall that I think many of you had attended. We had 160 attendees. We were only supposed to have 128, so we totally maxed out the room. This coming fall, we will be interviewing legislative candidates before the November elections. Also, this past year, our Development Council had many successful programs. We had Urban Renewal Panel, 1A for DIA Panel, which some of you were on the panel. And we are getting ready on May 13th to have our second bus tour, which will include Commerce City, Brighton, and parts of Adams County. We will be, people on the bus, actually, we have two buses. We have room for 110 people. The final deadline, if you want to be on that bus tour, is tomorrow at the end of day. And it will take you around to all the different organizations within your communities, and the economic development folks will be on the bus discussing exactly what's going on in your community. Some exciting news that I'd like to share with all these young people being here tonight. We are ready to launch a young professionals group probably in July, for the exact reason that they were presenting tonight and that you spoke of, is they have a lot to say. It's time that businesses let them come to the table and someday take your seats and my seat as well. So, what we are going to focus on for our young professionals is educational speakers and topics, community involvement, paying it forward, networking and fun outings, as well as mentoring both ways. When I say that, we may have a Board of Director or a City Council Member who wants to mentor one of the young professionals. But also, we want that leader to go back with the young professional and mentor with them for a little bit of time as well to see what type of work that they are doing so we can learn on both sides. In continuation of education, we also have our Leadership Metro North Program. And this year, we have 23 students that are graduating. We are already taking applications for the fall. We are looking to re-accredit, do re-accreditation with Front Range Community College for this program. We have improved our monthly programs. We worked with Strength Finders this year. The group is also doing their own fundraiser on June the 9th. And at graduation, we're going to do some debriefing with Strength Finders and actually have the students look at what their strengths are, and did they use those throughout the year, and with the fundraiser stepping up. They, so far, I think they've raised close to $7,000 for their fundraiser. One other new program that we will be starting this year is Retention Advisory Council, which is a group of volunteers that will go out to our existing members, talk with them, find out what their needs are, and bring the information back to the chamber so we can always stay in contact and engaged with our members. So, to finalize this, I want to talk about your city. Three out of our six last Development Councils, your city was very involved in three of those events. The leads group that I mentioned, we have 12 businesses committed and looking for a location to have that meeting in Commerce City, but yet have not found a location that will take these businesses. One other issue I'd like to mention, since I came on to the staff with the chamber, is I was notified by a business owner in Commerce City in 2015, was having some issues, had some questions, and had never met anyone from the city. So, I made an introduction. I followed up, and that was quite some time ago. I followed up with them about a month and a half ago, and they were absolutely thrilled with the influence that I was able to introduce them to one of you in the city of Commerce City, and they have built a great relationship and are very, very happy to be in your community. Your city is one of the fastest-growing communities in Colorado and in our region, with approximately 1,200 businesses and 30,000 employees, according to Dr. Cog, working in your city to support their families, bringing revenue to your small businesses. Commerce City lives up to its name. You are here for business, establishing relationships with the exchange of views, opinions, and attitudes, while embracing all forms of purchasing and sales of goods and services. As your Chamber of Commerce, it is our intention to continue to partner in supporting your efforts in business and commerce. Thank you so much for your time, and we really look forward to a continued, successful partnership in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in this evening, and we look forward to continuing our partnership as well.
Thank you.
All right. Next, Ellen Hauge. Hauge. Ellen, how are you?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. I'm Ellen Hauge, and I live at 15501 East 112th Avenue, Unit 36D. I attended the City Council Study Session where the report was made about the new recreation center in the north area. I am just concerned about the youth activity center at the new pool design. This would be an area similar to what I understand is at the Paradise Pool for the very young people, let's say from one to five, six years. On the new design, there was an area listed as a graduated depth area, but nothing was listed as an activity area other than the lap lanes, the lazy river, and a basketball general pool area. I believe this is an important area since many of the households have young children in the northern area. It has been my experience, if you don't see it on the plan, it usually doesn't happen. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ellen. We'll take that into consideration. All right. Is there anyone else in the audience that didn't get a chance to sign up on the citizen communication roster that would like to speak to the council at this time? Seeing no one, we'll move forward with our agenda. Next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda includes items that are routine, procedural, informational, self-explanatory, and non-controversial. They are presented to council for a single motion and vote. Any member of council may ask to remove a specific item for further discussion and a separate vote. Tonight, there are four items listed under the Consent Agenda. Does anyone on council wish to remove an item off of the Consent Agenda for further discussion? Mr. Douglas?
Yes, I would.
What, which item would you like to remove?
Resolution 2016-61, Resolution Approving Contract Amendment for Capital Improvement Program Public Information Services.
That item has been pulled. Is there any other council members that would like to remove an item off the Consent Agenda? Seeing none, I need a motion to approve the Consent Agenda. Let's go ahead, and I'm going to go to the city attorney and let him read the Consent Agenda with the removal of 2016-61, and then we'll, I'll ask for a motion at that time. Go ahead.
Resolution 2016-54, Resolution Approving Intergovernmental Agreement with Urban Drainage and Flood Control District. Resolution 2016-56, Resolution Authorizing Execution of Intergovernmental Agreement By and Between the City of Commerce City and the Colorado Department of Transportation. Resolution 2016-58, Resolution Approving Conveyance of City Property to Brighton School, District 27J.
All right. Thank you. Consent Agenda's been read. I'm open for a motion. Mr. Bullock?
Move to approve the Consent Agenda as read.
Thank you. Mr. Teeter?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the Consent Agenda. Title's been read. I'll take a roll call vote. For the record, the Consent Agenda has been approved unanimously by the council this evening, and now we'll go ahead and take up item 2016-61. Mr. Douglas?
Thank you. The reason why I had to pull this off the Consent Agenda, I understand this is continuing two years of services from CIG, and I feel that we're till the end of our projects, and we're going to have to kick off the Tower Road this year, the New Reg Center, and the on-ramp as far as the contract for design. And I feel I like to do a one-year extension and not a two-year, and look at hiring internal employees to start handling the 2K projects because that's going to be ongoing funding. It doesn't sunset, and it'd be nice if we can do this in-house instead of having to contract that out. I know there's a lot of services that are listed on there, but also know there's been guidance from our city as well as far as employees filling in and doing duties as well.
I will ask Ms. Halsted to provide a more detailed bit of background on the extension of the contract. It's our anticipation that towards the end of the construction of these capital projects that a number of those services won't be needed any longer. So, our thought was to continue those communication services through the completion of the projects. Ms. Halsted, can you share a little bit more?
Sure. In 2014, we went out for a competitive RFP to provide comprehensive public information services for the five-year program. At that time, we held several study sessions with City Council about the communication services with an acknowledgement that likely beyond the initial five projects, we wouldn't have a significant amount of work at the level that we have it for this five-year time period that would necessitate further ongoing activities that may or may not be able to be absorbed. So, when we went out for bid with the RFP, we included in the RFP and the contract these renewal options, three one-year renewal options, to really complete the projects at the five-year level because we wanted to provide that continuity. So, the amendment is to complete the five-year capital improvement program with a single contractor, and then later, we can determine if there is an additional need to have ongoing services and whether or not there's additional personnel needed, or if that work can be absorbed by in-house personnel. But at this point, we don't necessarily know that beyond the remaining 2018, we'll have enough project-specific work that would really facilitate an additional person full-time.
All right. Any discussion by council? Mr. Bullock?
In looking at the contract and the amendment to the contract, I understand why it is going on through the two-year extensions because on January 1st, 2019, all the projects are supposed to be done. And so, I figured that in May of 2018, we'll be so close that anything that we need, we would either be a one-year extension or it would be in-house. So, I have no problem with voting for this amendment because I know that as long as we have the projects going on, we're going to need the communications and everything. So, I would have been satisfied in the very beginning, but I had no say-so if it had been a five-year contract, but I'm good with the way it's extended now.
Robert?
Mr. Mayor, you may want to have a motion to approve the resolution, followed by discussion if there's any opportunity after that.
Is there a motion either way on order, or Resolution 2016-61? Ms. Carson? Mr. Bullock?
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Ms. Carson?
Yes. I guess with what Mr. Douglas is saying, it gives me a question, too, that within a year from now, where are these projects? You might not know.
The progression of these projects. So, what would be left to do that last year since the outreaches to citizens would already be there, the design, the development? My thinking is in one year, we're done with all of that. So, what would the following year consist of?
So, their contract would go from April of this year till April of 18. We still anticipate that we'll be in the recreation, the existing recreation center remodeled at that point, and so part of the program contract is not just the overall program and the design, but then also the ongoing construction. So, communicating with residents about impacts in the centers or on the roadway, that's part of what they would do. So, we envision that occurring at least through April, and then we'll really need to assess between April and the end of the year, from a resource standpoint, is that something we can do in-house, given the ebb and flow of other projects underway? Or is that something that, you know, we would want to extend on a monthly basis? But we anticipate the complete five-year program being significant resources that back in 2014, we weren't going to hire a full-time employee for.
No, and I do understand that, and I certainly don't want to overwhelm staff because 2K was quite the project for everybody. But along with that, we're three years in. Right? Are we three?
Two and a half.
Two and a half. So, there has been a lot of work done, and they have been invaluable to us. And, I mean, it's been great. There's been a few flaws here and there, but no matter what, you're going to have that. But back to what I was saying, and so if I try to see within the future, I would say a year from today, we are done with all of our outreaches for programs at the New Reg Center, all that development. We're done with Tower Road, we're done with the Three Parks, we're done with the pool, and all we have left for one year is...
Old Reg Center.
The older Reg Center. So, it just seems like a high cost when we only have that one project left to be paying that amount of money for that last year, because it looked in here like we could renew year by year.
We could certainly do that if that's the desire of council, to do a one-year renewal and then do another one-year renewal.
I'll let the rest of council have some input.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes. Well, I want to make a motion, but I don't want to hear if anybody else has anything to say.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on the floor. So, we want to do a amendment to the motion.
Amendment to the motion.
Okay? Make your amendment.
Amendment to the motion for a one-year contract with the option of next year, come back with a one-year extension, but prior to that one-year extension, have a study session to see where we're at, and if that's needed, so by the time this comes up, we'll be able to move forward. Because had we had this discussion beforehand, we probably could have done something a little different, but since we're at this point now where we had to make that decision, that's the reason why I'm asking for a one-year extension with the option of next year, giving them one more extension. Is that satisfied?
Now, I need to go to the motion maker. Is that amendment, we need to vote on the amendment? Mr. Shiesland?
Yes, I think we'd want to clarify it and have a second.
Right. So, I need a second on the amendment.
Yeah. I think we may want to state the amendment as moving to amend the resolution to authorize the contract as written with the exception that the term would be one year with an option to renew for one year.
All right. So, that's the amendment. Is there a second? Councilwoman Carson?
Second with discussion to follow.
All right. So, I have a second with discussion. Ms. Carson, please.
Ms. Halsted, do you have on the top of your head the price difference of, is it just price per year times two? Would we save 50% at this point, or would it cost us more in the future to do year by year?
So, one of the things that we did when we put out the request for proposal was ask for a firm fixed fee, which included both their labor and materials. One of the reasons we did that during the RFP was to provide budget certainty to the process to ensure that we were able to leverage what we needed to do for all of those projects and provide all of the materials without doing a labor-plus-material cost. So, I would envision the way that the contract would run, we'd still provide that monthly retainer, that firm fixed fee, because that still provides us with the best budgetary consistency, and then it would be an evaluation of whether or not that would continue into April of 17 into April of 18.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Bullock?
That was the same thing I was going to ask, if it was going to be more expensive to go to one year than two, but if it's going to stay at that same per-month rate, then I can go along with that.
All right. All right. Seeing no other discussion, the motion on the floor is to go to a one-year, the amended motion is to go to a one-year. You want to state that?
Sure, we would do the first, the motion on the floor is the motion to amend the resolution. After that vote, we would vote on the motion to approve the resolution as amended. So the motion would be as previously stated.
All right, so we're voting on the one-year amendment. I have a motion and a second. Want to read the title? It's up to you.
Apparently, the vote is on the amendment currently.
On the amendment, all right, so this is on the amendment.
It would just be a voice vote.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. There was a quiet aye. Just saying, that was as quiet as I've heard in 13 years. All right, the amendment has been passed. So now we'll vote on the item, resolution 2016-61 as amended by the previous vote. Now you want to read the title?
Absolutely. Resolution 2016-61, resolution approving a contract amendment for capital improvement program, public information services.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second. Title's been read. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. We got through that without totally disrupting my brain. Now, we'll move on to the next item in the agenda, which brings us to public hearings. So before I open the public hearing, I want to make a disclosure. Some of the, the property in question is owned by Mr. Eric Bush. I have done some previous work for Mr. Eric Bush, but never on this property, only on a different property as a water consultant. I will tell you that I have been contacted by Marty Flom and Mr. Bush to come in a couple of weeks ago to talk to our professional, Pat Buckley, which I sat in on the meeting, about redevelopment of the existing building. And in that meeting, I stated very clearly to the applicants and with Mr. Buckley in the room that I would not be allowed or tolerate any discussion pertaining to zoning. So with that said, I do not believe I have damaged my ability to be able to hear this case with clear conscience and make a clear decision. So I'd ask that the council to make a motion and a second and vote to allow me to continue to proceed and run this public hearing and vote on it. Is there a motion? Mr. Douglas?
So move.
Mr. Teeter?
Second.
A motion and a second to allow me to continue to participate in this public hearing after my public disclosure. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried, so I will continue forward with the public hearing. Ordinance Z 933-16, I will open the public hearing. The public hearing will proceed as follows. Staff will present, followed by the applicant, the public, and then will be invited to provide relevant comment and testimony. And I'm reading this out of the city charter, correct? Mr. Seasland?
It is largely derived from the council policies, yes.
Council policies. So this is, with Mr. Seasland being our new city attorney, this is something that we are putting in at the beginning of public hearings. So this will be the first time that I've had to go through this. And then the next public hearing tonight, we will say ditto, so I won't have to go through all this again. So the public hearing will proceed as follows. Staff will present, followed by the applicant. The public then will be invited to provide relevant comment and testimony. Then the applicant may have an opportunity to provide a rebuttal testimony. Council members may ask questions at the time, but are reminded not to discuss or express an opinion on the case during this hearing until the hearing is closed. We will welcome public comment and input to ensure an efficient hearing. All persons are required to observe the following. Each person desiring to speak should have provided their name on the sign-up sheet, we have one of those, before the meeting started. If you did not, please see the city clerk before we get into this public hearing too When you are recognized to speak, please approach the podium and state your name and address. All comments and testimony shall be made from the podium after being recognized. No comments or testimony shall be presented from the audience. So that means you don't have to blurt anything out during this public hearing, you can come up to the podium and say it. Comments and testimony are to be directed to the mayor and city council. Dialogue and inquiries from the person at the podium to members of staff or the seated audience is not permitted. Inquiries that require staff response will be referred to staff by the mayor. It is our desire to hear all relevant testimony on this topic in a timely manner and within an atmosphere of respect. Our procedures are designed to ensure that occurs. Thank you for your cooperation, and we look forward to hearing your comments. Now, I would like to invite the staff forward to make their presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of city council.
Good evening.
The case before you this evening is case Z-933-16. This is a zone change request from I-2 to C-3 for property located at 5844 Dahlia Street. The applicant in this case is Mr. Eric Bush. The current zoning of the subject property, which is highlighted in blue in the center of the map here, is I-2, as is much of the surrounding area. The request is to change the zoning to C-3. Again, as you can see, the surrounding area is primarily zoned industrially, a combination of I-2 and I-3, with commercial centered around the intersection of 60th and Vasquez, with additional commercial uses farther north along Highway 2. The comprehensive plan identifies the subject property for industrial and distribution-type uses. This includes warehouse and light manufacturing, as well as retail services and convenience commercial uses as secondary uses to the primary industrial. The subject property is shown here. It is approximately 4,500 square feet. It is developed with an existing former bus station, which my understanding is in a very dilapidated condition. The surrounding area to the south is occupied by Stewart and Stevenson, which is an equipment in part sales and distribution center, as well as a Metro PCS cellphone store on the northern property and the former site of the Dillon Towing Company. These images show the existing conditions of the subject property and the existing structure. City records indicate that the existing structure was built in 1960 and that the property has been zoned I-2 for as long as it's been part of the city. The applicant purchased the property last summer and in January submitted three cases for his proposed redevelopment of the site for a marijuana retail store. The first of these cases was AV-1734-16, which was a seven-foot side setback variance approved by the Board of Adjustment on April 12th, 2016. The second is case Z-933-16, which is this zoning case before you this evening, from I-2 to C-3. The planning commission heard this case on April 19th, 2016. And also under administrative review is case D-294-16. This is the actual development plan for the proposed redevelopment. The applicant's request tonight is to change the zoning from I-2 to C-3 in order to take advantage of the less restrictive setbacks. This resulted in only one variance being needed instead of three. It is also more appropriate for the less intensive commercial uses on the smaller subject property rather than the higher-intensity I-2 industrial uses. The applicant's proposed development consists of a 1,200-square-foot retail store building with landscaping in the front along the public right-of-way, along both Dahlia Street and East 58th Place, and includes parking in the rear of the site. The building elevations include windows or architectural detailing on all sides of the building in accordance with our commercial design standards. There were no objections or concerns received from any of our referral agencies. I do want to highlight three of those in particular, though, just for your reference. There were no concerns with the zone change or traffic from the police department. And just to note, the marijuana use while allowed in both I-2 and C-3 has a completely separate application and licensing process. The economic development division felt that the size and location of the property, being along a major arterial, is more suitable for commercial development than industrial. And the public works department noted no concerns with the site layout, including the access and parking. The planning commission heard the case, and they determined, they analyzed it based on the six criteria for zone changes. First, they determined that it is consistent with any city-adopted plans, this includes the comprehensive plan. They felt that the industrial and distribution future land use category does support the commercial use as a secondary use for the surrounding businesses and industrial area, and that the C-3 zoning and retail use is consistent with what's happening along the Highway 85 corridor altogether. The second criteria is that the change is compatible with the proposed development, surrounding land uses, and natural environment. As previously noted, it is compatible with a retail store use, and the surrounding land uses are largely industrial and commercial. The third criteria is that there are adequate public services provided. The subject property is located in an area that is already developed and served by adequate infrastructure, and through the proposed redevelopment and review process, the new development will be served in accordance with all of our current development standards. The fourth criteria is that there are adequate public uses. It was determined that there are adequate parks, schools, and open space, and therefore no additional public uses will be required due to the zone change and the redevelopment. The fifth criteria is that the change is needed to provide a proper mix of uses in the city. The planning commission felt that the requested zone change will allow the existing lot to redevelop with a retail use, which better serves the needs of the industrial neighborhood, along with the high visibility and small size, which make the property more suitable for commercial development rather than the higher-intensity I-2 uses. And finally, the sixth criteria is that the area for which the change is requested is changing such that it is in the public interest to allow a new use. The surrounding area at the intersection of 60th and Vasquez has increasingly redeveloped commercially over the last 30 years with multiple zone changes from industrial designations to commercial designations, and the commercial uses are along a highly visible arterial corridor, which is more appropriate to serve the nearby businesses. Overall, they felt that the proposed zone change from I-2 to C-3 will allow redevelopment of this existing site with a new retail building, enhancing business opportunities in this area. As of today, staff has received one response to public notice. A letter from Ms. Jill LeBond Soucy dated April 19th is included in the packet for your consideration of this case. And on Tuesday, April 19th, 2016, the planning commission voted three to two to forward a recommendation for approval to city council regarding this request. Thank you for your time this evening. Staffs will be able to answer any questions, and the applicant is also present to speak on behalf of this request.
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff by the council at this time? Councilwoman Carson?
Thank you for the presentation. I was looking for some pictures because of that letter that's included here. Speaking of the six-foot fence, is there any pictures of that?
In the bottom image here, you can see the fence that's referenced on the far-right side of the image.
And so is that letter correct, that that does not then comply if we...
Based on the site plan that's been prepared, the fence does lie slightly within the site distance triangle. Due to the overall site layout and the small size of the property, the public works department did not have significant concerns at this time.
So the owner of that property then would not be liable, or...
I do not know the answer to that.
Mr. Seasland?
I'm not familiar with the letter. If you could restate the question.
The letter basically said that there could be a site distance issue with the fence at the location where it comes out, close to the sidewalk, for people that would be utilizing the parking lot for the property in question backing out or pulling forward out onto 58th Avenue. The fence belongs to the property to the east. Would those folks that own the fence be held liable for damage? This is, I'm trying to, this is what I'm assuming your question is. The people that own the fence would not be held liable for a vehicle that backed out and had an accident there because of the site distance issue? That's the question that I believe is posed by Councilwoman Carson.
Unfortunately, I would not be able to make an informed legal opinion as to the potential liabilities of the differing property owners without knowing more about the situation or the law surrounding it.
Okay, thank you. So who do we go to to get clarification of the question from Councilwoman Carson? I know that our public works department said that they don't have a problem with the parking situation the way that it's been designed, correct? Mr. Seasland?
To provide the council legal advice as to the liability of the property owners internally, we could provide that to you in a privileged manner after doing legal research. But as to the relative liabilities of the property owners to advise either of them, I wouldn't be able to do that.
All right, well, you would have time after this hearing to give us that information.
Yes, I would have to do that if the council wanted to continue the matter.
All right, so you can request that if you like, Councilwoman Carson.
Well, I'm just concerned with some of the stuff in here that we could be imposing on the neighbor here, because evidently this fence was in compliance when it was built. And because we're changing the use of the property, it's going to change that. So if that fence has to be changed and at what cost and who would pay that fee?
If I may try to answer that question, I don't believe any city development requirements on the subject property could require any change to a fence on the adjoining property. Whether it creates any liability for the adjoining property would be something between the adjoining property owner and their legal counsel. Our public works folks took a look at the site distance issue, although it doesn't meet our site distance triangle, they did not feel it was a significant enough safety issue to prevent redevelopment of this property.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions of our staff? Mr. Douglas?
The question I have, I think it's a couple more slides down. It shows the site, the 58th Place. This right here, now this is existing fence right here, correct? So this fence right here, how tall is that fence?
It is approximately six feet.
Six feet, okay. So based on the letter, as far as people pulling out, backing out here in question, is it, it's their, it's the property we're talking about right now, right? Those folks pulling out?
My understanding is that their concern is regarding people pulling out of the subject property, and you can see the site distance triangle shown here on the site plan that does cut slightly behind the fence line.
So is, how could this be helped as far as mirrors or so, so if they back up, they can see cars coming? Would that help?
Potentially. I'm not a traffic engineer, so I don't know exactly what would be effective in this case.
Yeah, my concern is the site distance as far as the fence, that is a problem. Based on zoning, is there different types of zoning that could take care of this as far as the fence?
Since it's on an adjacent property, that we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be addressing the adjacent property as part of the redevelopment of the site.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Teeter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. How long has the six-foot fence been in place? We have that information at all? We probably don't, huh? Okay.
Nothing officially on record.
All right. This facility was used as a bus depot at one time, and was there any history of problems back then when it was a bus terminal?
My understanding is that it has not been in use for 20 to 30 years, so I don't know that we have any records of that.
Thank you.
Can I take care of it, Mr. Teeter? Seeing no others, no other questions from the council to staff, I would ask the applicant, if he'd like to come forward and add any additional information to the public hearing.
My name is Brian Rudin. My name is Brian Rudin. I live at 1155 Orchard Street, Golden, Colorado, 80401, and I am here to represent the applicant. Mayor and council members, thank you very much for your time tonight, and I'd really like to thank the planning staff. I believe they did a fantastic job, and I wholeheartedly agree with the analysis as well as the recommendation made by the planning commission. I'm here to answer questions if anyone has any. The only thing I'd like to add is that if... The only thing I'd like to add is that if, and it's only speculation, that it could become a problem, but if the site, because of the fence, does become an issue, there are numerous ways to address it, and I would like to address it at that time. So one idea that we've already had, if it becomes a problem, is a mirror, and there's other ways that could be resolved as well. So I do appreciate Ms. Soucy's concerns and definitely heard that loud and clear and make sure that if that does become an issue, that it is addressed. And if there are any questions, I'm here to help answer those. Thank you.
Thank you. So now I'm going to look for questions to the applicant from the City Council. Mr. Douglas?
Thank you. Thank you very much for being here. Yes, that is my concern, and for something like this here, I'd rather not wait until something happens. I like to have that put in to prevent anything from happening. So not if, but not to wait, but actually have that, if this is going to be built, have that mirror be put in place to prevent any kind of accident happening for the future.
Not a problem. Happy to do it.
Any other questions for the applicant? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, I'm going to go to the audience, but before I go to the audience, I'm going to ask Mr. David Soucy, I believe, is, hopefully I pronounced it correct. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and we'll get your view on the zoning request.
My name is David Soucy, like Lucy, just like that.
Oh, gotcha.
And I live at four thirty-three South Balsam Street in Lakewood, Colorado, eight oh two two six, and I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor and council, for letting me speak to this matter this evening. We, Brian and I have talked about this issue, not about this particular issue, but about the fact that we'll be neighbors and that we're developing some things together or next to each other, and my wife Jill was concerned about this, and I certainly am as well, and someone had asked about pictures, and I've got pictures here, but I really don't know if this is going to be relevant, because I really want to work with Brian as well to try to resolve this situation in one way or another. We're going to be neighbors, we want to be good neighbors, and we're actually, we've met, we've had a pre-application meeting with Robin and the staff about our plans for that property, which includes an adjoining C-3, at which time we could take that fence down. As we get that plan moving, we want to take that fence down, we want to do our part of it, too. I'm just a recent owner, I just bought the thing five, six weeks ago, so as part of our development, we plan to do that.
All right. Thank you for the testimony?
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else in the audience who wants to speak on this public hearing Z nine three three dash one six this evening? Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing. I'm going to ask council if they'd like to discuss the issue before I ask for a motion. Mr. Bullock?
He was for the motion.
Mr. Douglas, any discussion?
Yes, just bringing it to make sure that there is some sort of mirror in place when this is, after it's constructed, to alleviate any kind of future accidents.
You can, seeing no other discussion, if you would like to make a motion, you could add that. This isn't the time. We need to do findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission, but if you want to make the motion on the ordinance, I would gladly call on you, and you could add that into your motion. So I need a motion to accept the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission. Mr. Bullock?
So moved.
Thank you. Mr. Teter?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission concerning ordinance Z nine three three dash one six. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now I'm open for a motion for the introduction of ordinance Z nine three three dash one six by City Council as seated. Mr. Douglas?
Yes, so moved.
Would you like to add into there anything?
Yes, I'd like to amend that, yes, and add on the construct, on the construction of this property, and a safety mirror be added as far as backing up the...
Thank you.
A site mirror off the property of Fifty-Eight Forty-Four Dahlia Street?
Thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Teter?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second for the introduction of ordinance Z nine three three dash one six, including one site mirror for safety. I'd ask the city attorney to please read the title.
Ordinance Z dash nine nine three dash sixteen, an ordinance rezoning the property described in Exhibit A attached here, too, and made a part here of, located at five eight four four Dahlia Street, Commerce City, Colorado, from I-2 to C-3, and amending the zoning map of the city of Commerce City, Colorado, to reflect said rezoning.
Thank you. I've got a title read, and I've got a motion and a second. I'll ask for a roll call vote. All right, for the record, the introduction of ordinance Z nine three three dash one six is unanimous by the City Council this evening. Now we'll move into our next item. Ordinance Z eight nine six dash eleven dash twelve dash sixteen. I will open that public hearing. The same procedures will apply for this public hearing. Council may ask questions, but are reminded not to discuss or express an opinion in the case during the hearing until the hearing is closed. I'd like to invite staff forward to make their presentation.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of council. The next case tonight is a zoning case. It's case Z eight ninety-six dash eleven dash twelve dash sixteen. The applicant is DIA Tech Center LLC, and the request tonight is to rezone several agricultural parcels to PUD planning at development, which are part of the DIATC Zone Document Development. So this particular subject property tonight, it's highlighted here on your screens in green, the agricultural parcels right here, there's two of them. Just for your reference, we have the Wildlife Refuge is here to the west, we have Eighty-first Avenue is right here, we have the USA Airport Parking, that's unincorporated Adams County, that's this gray color here, then we have Tower Road to the east of the screen. The comprehensive plan for these parcels do identify them as a DIA technology. You'll see that, the purple color here, and, which is what the applicant is proposing in terms of land uses. And then also, I want to bring to your attention this dash line. This is one of the DIA noise contours, because of course we have the east-west runway right here. These properties are contained, at least partially, within the noise contours, therefore no residential would be allowed. The applicant's not proposing any residential, so again, does conform with the comprehensive plan. The particular aerial photography, these two properties are currently vacant, there's nothing on them. In fact, Eighty-first Avenue basically dead ends right now, right past the exit point for the airport parking. There is a van rental that's currently constructing, they're having a temporary use, and they're operating or constructing a permanent facility just here on the north side of Eighty-first Avenue. The existing conditions, so I did reference that they are vacant, they are approximately fifty-one acres in size for both parcels together. If combined, or once combined with the DIA Tech Center, that development will be two-hundred and fifty acres in size. The DIA Tech Center development does allow a combination of commercial and office and employment and industrial uses. There currently is the seven-eleven at Tower Road and Eighty-first Avenue, and then, of course, the USA Airport Parking is unincorporated Adams County to the south, and then Canopy Airport Parking is in the city, that's just east of Tower Road. The van rental business that I did reference, it is under construction, and then the properties, as also referenced, are within the DIA noise contours. A little bit of history, these two agricultural properties were annexed back in nineteen eighty-nine into the city, and then the DIATC development was annexed and zoned back in two thousand and eleven, with the subsequent application in two thousand and ten allowed for some vesting of the zoning for that development. So the current request is to update the DIATC Zone Document to include those two agricultural pieces, again, fifty-one acres. The uses on those two parcels will be employment-related, so they could be a combination of office, industrial, manufacturing, research and development, et cetera, and then the road connectivity will extend through these parcels as well, and I'll show a diagram here in just a moment. And then the purpose for the applicant is to reflect the current market demand in employment-related uses, develop a master plan, employment development. So oftentimes, we talk about master plan residential or commercial, this is an employment master plan development. So our PUD Zone Document process traditionally does consist of three steps, a concept schematic process, then a Zone Document, and then a PUD Permit. This is an amendment to the existing Zone Document application, therefore no concept schematic is required, and individual PUD permits will be reviewed administratively as each area is developed. The particular purpose of the Zone Document phase tonight is to establish the legal entitlements, what can be done, where it can be built, what it looks like, et cetera. This is the six sheets of the proposed PUD Zone Document. I don't want to go over each one, but they do lay out basically what's, the general statements and ideas found on each sheet. Is consistent with our approved PUDs process and other PUDs within the city. This is the map that I wanted to bring to your attention, so we're looking at Planning Areas Ten and Planning Areas Eleven. Those are the new areas. The existing areas are here, they are, they remain the same as what's currently entitled. So we have the two new areas, again, the zone for a combination of office and employment and commercial uses. You'll see here the roadway network is continued and will continue to extend up into the north area as well, but it is on that grid. In terms of zoning approval criteria, it is consistent with the comprehensive plan that we've talked about. It is integrated and connected with other developments and parcels within the area. It is currently and will be served by utilities, and it does accomplish what straight zoning cannot. We don't have a combination that, you know, you can zone part of it commercial, part of it industrial. This allows a greater opportunity for take place of the market demands. In terms of public notification, as of today, staff has not received any inquiries or responses to the public notice for this particular application. Planning Commission did hear this case back in April nineteenth, held a public hearing and voted five to zero to forward this request to council with a favorable recommendation, subject to the finding of facts. And with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions I can, and then we also do have the applicant here to address council as well.
Thank you. First, we'll go to ask any questions of the staff from the City Council at this time. Mr. Bullock, do you have a question?
No, sir.
All right. Any of the council have questions? Seeing none, I'd ask the applicant to come forward, Mr. Thompson, to give us any additional information or testimony on the hearing this evening.
Chris Thompson, five seven five three, Shasta Circle, Littleton, Colorado, eight oh one two three. Thank you, Mayor and council, for considering this PUD amendment. The fifty acres we're amending to the PUD fit nicely into the overall framework plan that we established on the PUD originally, and we, which would be the DIA Technology zoning, which provides for uses from industrial distribution, airport-related uses, office, and some other accessory uses. And we are excited about developing this project. We're getting a lot of momentum on the project now, and we actually have a user under contract for a portion of this project, and I think will bring some great jobs to Commerce City.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone on council has any questions or comments for Mr. Thompson at this time? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on the matter of ordinance Z eight nine six dash eleven dash twelve dash sixteen? Seeing no one, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. I'm going to ask the council if they'd like to discuss the matter before voting. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'm open for a motion to accept the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission. Mr. Bullock?
Move to accept the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission.
Thank you. Mr. Teter?
Second.
Motion is second, to accept the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission concerning ordinance Z eight nine six dash eleven dash twelve dash sixteen. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now I'm open for a motion for the introduction of the ordinance. Mr. Bullock?
Move to introduce Z eight nine six dash eleven dash twelve dash sixteen on first reading, council is seated.
Thank you. Mr. Teter?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the introduction of the ordinance. I'd ask the city attorney to please read the title.
Ordinance C dash eight nine six dash eleven dash twelve dash sixteen, an ordinance approving the DIA Tech Center PUD Zone Document Amendment Number One.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Title's been read, I'll ask for a roll call vote. For the record, ordinance Z eight nine six dash eleven dash twelve dash sixteen is approved unanimously by the City Council this morning, or this evening, introduced unanimously by the City Council this evening. All right, ordinance is on first reading. We have several of these, as they are to do with the new codes for the international building codes. We'll start off with ordinance two zero eight seven. Is there anyone on council who has questions regarding this ordinance? Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on this ordinance? Seeing none, I'm open for a motion to introduce ordinance twenty eighty-seven by council as seated. Mr. Bullock?
Move to introduce ordinance two zero eight seven on first reading, council is seated.
Thank you. Mr. Teter?
Second.
I have a motion and a second with city attorney, please read the title.
Ordinance two zero eight seven, an ordinance amending the twenty sixteen budget of the city of Commerce City, Colorado, by the recognition of the Colorado Department of Transportation grant in the amount of three thousand three hundred and sixty dollars for clicket or ticket efforts and the authorization of the expenditure thereof.
Thank you. A motion and a second, title's been read. We'll take a roll call vote. For the record, ordinance twenty eighty-seven is introduced unanimously by the City Council this evening. Ordinance twenty eighty-eight, is anybody on City Council have any questions regarding this ordinance? Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on this ordinance? Seeing none, I'm open for a motion for the introduction of ordinance twenty eighty-eight. Mr. Teter?
Move to introduce ordinance two zero eight eight, council is seated, first reading.
Mr. Diaz?
Second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. With the city attorney, please read the title.
Ordinance two zero eight eight, an ordinance amending the twenty sixteen budget of the city of Commerce City, Colorado, by the recognition of the Colorado Department of Transportation grant in the amount of five thousand dollars for DUI enforcement efforts and the authorization of the expenditure thereof.
Thank you. Ask for a roll call vote. For the record, ordinance twenty eighty-eight is introduced unanimously by the City Council this evening. Move on to ordinance AN two three three dash fifteen dash sixteen. Does anyone on council have any questions regarding this ordinance? Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on this ordinance? Seeing none, I'm open for a motion. Councilwoman Carson?
Move to introduce ordinance AN dash two three three dash one five dash one six. Council is seated, first reading.
Thank you. Councilwoman Elliott?
Second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. City attorney, please read the title.
Ordinance AN two three three one five sixteen, an ordinance amending the legal description attached to Exhibit A to ordinance AN two three three fifteen sixteen regarding property located at one zero six five five, East One Hundred and Twentieth Court, Commerce City, Colorado.
Thank you. I'll ask for a roll call vote. For the record, ordinance AN two three three fifteen sixteen is introduced unanimously by City Council this evening. Do we have ordinance twenty eighty? Does anybody on council have any questions regarding this ordinance? Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on this ordinance? Seeing none, I'm open for a motion. Mr. Teter?
Motion to approve ordinance two zero eight zero as presented, council seated.
Thank you. Mr. Douglas?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the introduction of twenty eighty. City attorney, please read the title.
Ordinance twenty eighty, an ordinance amending Section six dash... Ordinance 2080, an ordinance amending Section 6-2012 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code pertaining to weeds and vegetation.
Thank you. I'll ask for a roll call vote. For the record, ordinance 2080 is introduced unanimously by the City Council this evening. We'll move on to ordinance 2079. Ordinance 2079 and the next 10 ordinances on the agenda all amend the various sections of the municipal code and adopt the international codes by reference. The City Charter requires public hearings on the ordinances adopting these codes by referencing during the second reading rather than the first reading, as is the city's common practice. Staff will provide a presentation at the public hearing, but is available to answer questions from the council this evening. Is anyone on the council have any questions regarding these ordinances that were not addressed on the April 11 study session? Mr. Bullock? No. No? All right. I'm open for a motion to introduce ordinance 2079 by council is seated. Mr. Bullock?
Move to introduce ordinance 2079 on first reading. Counsel is seated.
Thank you. Mr. Teeter?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Please read the title.
Ordinance 2079, an ordinance repealing Division 1 of Article 4 of Chapter 5 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code enacting Division 1 of Article 4 of Chapter 5 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code to provide for the adoption of the 2012 edition of the International Building Code, including Appendix Chapters C, E, F, G, and I, N, J, and all standards contained in such code and appendix chapters as amended herein, providing for the issuance of permits and collection of fees thereunder, and providing for penalties and civil remedies for violation of the provisions of said code in this ordinance.
Thank you. I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Yeah, drink your water now.
Okay, for the record, ordinance 2079 has been introduced unanimously by the City Council this evening. Then we'll move on to ordinance 2089. I'm open for a motion to introduce ordinance 2089 by the City Council is seated. Mr. Bullock?
Move to introduce ordinance 2089 on first reading. Counsel is seated.
Mr. Teeter?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for ordinance 2089. I ask the city attorney, please read the title.
Ordinance 2089, an ordinance repealing Division 3 of Article 4 of Chapter 5 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code enacting Division 3 of Article 4 of Chapter 5 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code to provide for the adoption of the 2012 edition of the International Existing Building Code, including Appendix Chapter B and all standards contained in such code and appendix as amended herein, providing for the issuance of permits and collection of fees thereunder, and providing for penalties and civil remedies for violation of the provisions of said code in this ordinance.
Thank you. I'll ask for a roll call vote. For the record, ordinance 2089 has been introduced unanimously by the City Council this evening. We'll go to ordinance 2090. I'm open for a motion. I'm open for a motion to introduce ordinance 2090 by council is seated. Let's see, Mr. Douglas?
Sorry about that. Move to make a motion on ordinance 2019, first reading?
2090.
Counsel is seated?
2090.
2090, sorry.
All right, I have a motion to introduce ordinance 2090 by council is seated. Mr. Paulo Diaz?
Second.
I was second. What was it? City attorney, please read the title of 2090.
Ordinance 2090, an ordinance repealing Division 2 of Article 4 of Chapter 5 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code enacting Division 2 of Article 4 of Chapter 5 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code to provide for the adoption of the 2012 edition of the International Residential Code, including Appendix Chapters A, B, C, D, E, G, H, I, J, K, M, N, O, P, and Q, and all standards contained in such code and appendix chapters as amended herein, providing for the issuance of permits and collection of fees thereunder, and providing for penalties and civil remedies for violation of the provisions of said code in this ordinance.
Thank you. I'll ask for a roll call vote. For the record, ordinance 2090 is introduced unanimously by the City Council this evening. We'll move on to ordinance 2091. I'm open for a motion to introduce ordinance 2091. Counsel is seated. Councilwoman Elliott?
Thank you, Mayor. Move to introduce ordinance 2091 on first reading. Counsel is seated.
Thank you. Councilwoman Carson?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. With attorney, please read the title.
Ordinance 2091, an ordinance repealing Division 10 of Article 4 of Chapter 5 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code enacting Division 10 of Article 4 of Chapter 5 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code to provide for the adoption of the 2012 edition of the International Fire Code, including Appendix Chapters B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, and J, and all standards contained in such code and appendix chapters as amended herein, providing for the issuance of permits and collection of fees thereunder, and providing for penalties and civil remedies for violation of the provisions of said code in this ordinance.
Thank you. I'll ask for a roll call vote. For the record, ordinance 2091 is also unanimously introduced by this council this evening. Ordinance 2092, I'm open for a motion. Mr. Bullock?
Move to introduce ordinance 2092 on first reading. Counsel is seated.
Thank you. Mr. Teeter?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Please read that title.
Ordinance 2092, an ordinance repealing Division 8 of Article 4 of Chapter 5 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code enacting Division 8 of Article 4 of Chapter 5 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code entitled International Fuel Gas Code to provide for the adoption of the 2012 edition of the International Fuel Gas Code and Appendix Chapters A, B, C, and D as amended, governing fuel gas systems and gas-fired appliances, providing for the issuance of and collection of fees for permits under the 2012 International Fuel Gas Code, and providing for the penalties and civil remedies for violation of the provisions of said code, Appendix Chapters A, B, C, and D in this ordinance.
Thank you. I'll ask for a roll call vote. Again, ordinance 2092 is unanimously introduced by the council this evening. Go on to ordinance 2093. I'm open for a motion. Mr. Teeter?
Motion to approve ordinance 2093, first reading. Counsel seated.
Thank you. Mr. Douglas? I have a motion and a second. With attorney, please read the title.
Ordinance 2093, an ordinance repealing Division 7 of Article 4 of Chapter 5 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code enacting Division 7 of Article 4 of Chapter 5 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code to provide for the adoption of the 2012 edition of the International Mechanical Code, including Appendix Chapter A and all standard contained in such code and appendix as such code and appendix are amended herein, providing for the issuance of permits and collection of fees thereunder, and providing for penalties and civil remedies for violation of the provisions of said code in this ordinance.
Thank you. I'll ask for a roll call vote. For the record, ordinance 2093 is introduced unanimously by the City Council this evening. Moving on to ordinance 2094. I'm open for a motion. Mr. Diaz?
Move to introduce ordinance 2094. The council is seated.
Thank you. Mr. Teeter?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Please read that title.
Ordinance 2094, an ordinance repealing Division 6 of Article 4 of Chapter 5 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code enacting Division 6 of Article 4 of Chapter 5 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code to provide for the adoption of the 2012 edition of the International Plumbing Code, including Appendix Chapters B, C, D, E, and F, and all standards contained in such code and appendix chapters, and the 2012 edition of the International Private Sewage Disposal Code, including all standards contained in such code as those codes and appendices are here and amended herein, providing for the issuance of permits and collection of fees thereunder, and providing for penalties and civil remedies for violation of the provisions of said codes in this ordinance.
Thank you. I'll ask for a roll call vote. For the record, ordinance 2094 also is introduced unanimously by this council this evening. Moving on to ordinance 2095. Mr. Douglas, I'm open for a motion.
Move to make a motion on ordinance 2095. First reading. Counsel is seated.
Thank you. Let's see, Ms. Carson?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Please read the title.
Ordinance 2095, an ordinance repealing Division 9 of Article 4 of Chapter 5 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code enacting Division 9 of Article 4 of Chapter 5 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code entitled International Energy Conservation Code to provide for the adoption of the 2012 edition of the International Energy Conservation Code as amended, providing for the issuance of and collection of fees for permits under the 2012 International Energy Conservation Code, and providing for penalties and civil remedies for violation of the provisions of said code in this ordinance.
Thank you. I'll ask for a roll call vote. For the record, ordinance 2095 is also unanimously introduced by the City Council this evening. Moving on to ordinance 2096. Councilwoman Elliott, I'm open for a motion.
Thank you, Mayor. Move to introduce ordinance 2096 on first reading. Counsel is seated.
Thank you. Mr. Bullock?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Wow, I don't know where that came from. A motion and a second. Please read the title.
I'm reading.
That was way down.
Ordinance 2096, an ordinance amending Section 5-4500 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code to provide for the adoption by the City Council of the City of Commerce City of the 2014 National Electric Code.
Thank you. I'll ask for a roll call vote. For the record, 2096, ordinance 2096 is also introduced unanimously by the City Council this evening. Moving on to ordinance 2097. Mr. Bullock, I'm open for a motion.
Move to introduce ordinance 2097 on first reading. Counsel is seated.
Thank you. Mr. Diaz?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Read the title, please.
Ordinance 2097, an ordinance repealing Division 4 of Article 4 of Chapter 5 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code enacting Division 4 of Article 4 of Chapter 5 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code to provide for the adoption of the 2012 edition of the International Property Maintenance Code, including Appendix Chapter A and all standards contained in such code and appendix as such code and appendix are amended herein, providing for the issuance of permits and the collection of fees thereunder, and providing for penalties and civil remedies for violation of the provisions of such code in this ordinance.
Thank you. I'll ask for a roll call vote. For the record, ordinance 2097 is also introduced unanimously by the City Council this evening. Ordinance 2098, Councilwoman Carson, will you give me a motion, please?
Move to introduce the last ordinance, 2098, on first reading. Counsel is seated.
Councilwoman Elliott?
Second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Read that title, please.
Ordinance 2098, an ordinance repealing Articles 14, 15, and 16 of Chapter 5 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code governing elevators and escalators, platform and chairway lifts, and the Performance Code for Buildings and Facilities, respectively.
I'll ask for a roll call vote. For the record, ordinance 2098 also is introduced unanimously by the City Council this evening. We move on to our next item on the agenda is presentations. We'll start with the Capitol Program Update. Rick?
If I may, Mayor, I'd like to go back to ordinance 2091.
2091.
I'd like to thank the Fire Department for working with city staff and council on our desires not to require sprinkler systems in the homes that are being built in Commerce City to give us a disadvantage in the sales of homes in the area.
I would, I would agree. Thank you, Mr. Teeter. I know in 2014, we, we were dealing with that particular issue, and no one else in the metro area was implementing, implementing that code, which would have put us at a disadvantage from a building situation. So you're right. Thank you. It does go out to the Fire District as well. All right, now, presentation is the Capitol Program Update. I'd like to invite who's already stepped up to the plate here, Director Scott Hergerator, to make the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. It's a pleasure to be here. This is the ninth quarterly update for the 2K program and related CIP projects. So on behalf of the CH2M team and my colleague Danielle Yearsley, the city management team, and our colleagues in Public Works and the Parks Department who've been instrumental in this program, we're pleased to be here.
Bear with us for one moment while we locate and load the presentation. While we're waiting, I just wanted to, there, there is a rumor that Bob Gaylor retired so we wouldn't have to read all those titles. I have no reason to believe that that's true.
You should congratulate Robert on a good job. We were all very impressed by you.
I'm just doing my duty, as mandated by the chart.
We did see Mr. Gaylor Sunday at the presentation, and he's looking, still looking
Thank you, Danielle. So we'll get through this quickly. I know it's a long evening for you, but as a reminder, the, the 2K program was approved by voters in November of 2013. It committed to five projects in five years. High-quality facilities, spending taxpayer dollars wisely, and completing projects on time were the key paramount objectives. The program, as a reminder, we're tracking $137 million budget, and that includes all of the projects as well as management reserve or program contingency. We issued the first debt back in summer of 2014, $78 million. We're looking to get ready for our next issuance here in mid-year. Other funding sources of approximately $6.9 million in grant funding is also in addition to that $137 million, and to date through March of 2015, we've expended roughly $20 million. On the revenue side, as the voters approved the 1% addition to the tax, use, sales and use tax, you can see that in 2014 and in 2015, the receipts have been on the order of $10 to $11 million per year. The reason that the 2014 expenditures in yellow that you see there is less is again because we didn't issue that debt until mid-year in 2014. We didn't have the debt service to pay on that as well. So we had more debt service to pay in 2015. As you look at 2016 at the bottom chart, you can see that we're tracking similarly to 2014 and 2015's tax revenues. Importantly, the schedule, you can see where we're at with the red line as of the end of Q1, and we have a number of projects completed. The outdoor pool and neighborhood park at Frontera have been completed, and we have Tower Road and the new recreation center well underway, as well as Turnberry and Villages East Neighborhood Parks. The existing recreation center, we've got some planning underway right now, and we'll be moving further on that later this year. As we look at the projects by phase, again, the projects, the life cycle of the projects goes across the top from planning all the way through design, construction, and closeout. And you can see that Frontera and the outdoor leisure pool have both been accepted, and we have two projects in construction, Turnberry and Neighborhood, Villages at Buffalo Run East, and we're working very diligently now, as you know, on the design of the new recreation center, and Maria's team in Public Works is getting ready to roll out construction on Tower Road here in Q2. On the CIP front, as we report out on those projects as well, importantly, a couple of key projects, I won't point to all of these, but the RTD North Metro Stationary Improvements are in pre-design, along with the Tower Road Peña Boulevard ramp, which you're all very anxious for. And in the design phase, Highway 2 widening, we'll be completing design here coming up in Q2. On the Parks and Rec side, we importantly just completed the Buffalo Run Clubhouse improvements, and there's been several events there already. So that's been a great project. It looks great. In terms of the, the highlights on the contracting side, you all have had the opportunity in study sessions to see our construction manager, general contractor, Pinkard, onboard. So they were retained, went through the City Council process, and have been helping us with the estimating on the new recreation center, and we solicited bids for the Tower Road construction. On the design front, the final design for Tower Road widening was completed, and the new recreation center, 30% plans for the infrastructure were done. You all are very familiar, as is the KIPCAC team, who have all provided great input. So thank you all for the time that you have spent personally, as well as the KIPCAC members, if they're watching. if they're watching from home, on developing the concepts for the new recreation center. And it's really taking form, and we're currently in the midst of schematic design right now. On the neighborhood park front, the groundbreaking session was held for Turnberry, and the Caterpillar theme was in full force and form. And likewise, at Buffalo Run East, the neighborhood park groundbreaking enjoyed the company of Dinger from the Rockies and Edison the Eagle from the Rapids and from the local high school team, and everybody got to knock the balls off the tee. So, that was great, and we're looking for both of those parks to be completed by late summer, early fall of this year. On the CIP front, the RFP for Construction Management Services for Highway Two was done. The design of the Chambers multi-use path and pedestrian bridge was completed, and the substantial completion, and I know you were all very anxious for this, of a hundred and fourth Avenue Phase Three B was also completed. Major milestone. The Buffalo Run Clubhouse remodel was substantially complete at the end of Q1. It looks great. Hope you've all had a chance to go out and see what's there. As we look ahead now in Q2, as I mentioned, the recreation center and infrastructure design will move forward into schematic design and design development, and the Tower Road widening construction project will begin. On the CIP front, we'll be receiving bids for Highway Two, awarding the design contract for Tower Road, Pena Ramp, as well as the Chamber Road, Chambers Road Pedestrian Bridge and Trail. We're also looking for improvements on Seventy-second Avenue to begin construction. Our next quarterly update will be in August, and that will represent the midpoint of the five years. So, we'll be two and a half years into the program at that point in time. And with that, again, thank you for all of your time and attention that you've put into all of the work and all the projects and all the events. And I'd like to entertain any questions you might have.
Are there any questions from any of the council members? Ms. Carson?
Thank you for the presentation, and I don't really have a question. It was just, I don't know, maybe two months ago, and I said, "Where's the wow factor?" While I was going through my council packet, my husband was sitting there, and I said, "Would you like to see pictures of what the new recreation center will look like?" And he looked at it, and he said, "Wow." So, we're there.
Well, that's outstanding. It sounded like that wow had an exclamation point at the end of it as well. So, excellent.
It did. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Mr. Douglas?
I'd like to say thank you as well. Thank you for the quarterly updates. It's really nice. We're moving along as scheduled. Really appreciate your effort. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman.
Mr. Diaz?
Thanks also for your presentation. Just one quick question. I know we are awarding the contract for the Chambers multipurpose sidewalk. Do you know when that is expected to be completed?
The actual construction?
Yes. Yeah.
I'm gonna phone a friend.
Sorry, Maria, I'm making you get up.
To our Public Works colleague, Maria DeAndrea.
I thought you needed to stretch or something.
Yeah, I do. Yes, thank you, Councilmember Diaz. The plan right now, I believe, is for a forty-five day construction period. So, we're still analyzing those bids. They have come in significantly higher than we expected. So, we're discussing how we modify the contract and hopefully bringing that back either at the May meeting or the first meeting in June, and then it'd be about forty-five to sixty days beyond that.
So, probably still by the end of like 2016 or something?
Absolutely. Yes. Yeah. Hopefully by the end of summer.
All right. You're a great phone-a-friend. Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, Councilman.
Okay. Our next presentation is, we're gonna have 2016 Quarter One Work Plan Update. Mr. McBroom, would you like to do your presentation?
Thank you, Mayor Protem Bullock. April first was the end of the first quarter. At the end of each quarter, we asked departments to submit progress reports on the commitments that we made at the beginning of the year in the annual work plan. We spent some time collecting and assembling that data, analyzing it, looking for trends. And so, about a month after the quarter, we come before council to present the status of our work towards accomplishing the annual work plan. We continue to divide the work plan according to the five City Council goals. That's a, a bit of a difference. We used to organize the work plan by department. We made the shift last year to organize the work plan based on council goals, primarily because it's not nearly as important who does the work as it is why we're doing the work. Associating work plan accomplishments with City Council's goals helps us remind ourselves, remind council, remind the community why we are doing this work. Goal number three, which relates primarily to capital projects, we do cover separately. That's the presentation that Mr. Hergenrader just went through with you. Some of the information in the work plan is collected on an annual basis. You might recall our last quarterly update in February this year was a good update on accomplishments and data that we collected throughout 2015. So, some of the information that you'll see in the work plan is not being reported on a quarterly basis. So, we will come back to you in February of next year and share any annual trends that we're noticing with that annual data. This presentation is a summary of the information. There's a lot of information included in the packet. For those that are interested in analyzing the data yourselves, all of the information is there. This presentation is a very high-level summary of those things that we thought were noteworthy that might be of interest to council or the public. The first City Council goal that we will talk about tonight is developing a balanced and vibrant economy to improve socioeconomic status. We have a number of things that we've highlighted here. I'm just gonna talk about a few of them. City Council was very helpful in attending... Pardon me a moment. My slides are in the wrong order. Actually, I think this is the wrong presentation.
Okay. Thank you for your presentation. We, we can, I guess at the next council meeting, you can update us on the presentation, but unless you want to go through this presentation, if you're prepared for it, I don't know. This has never happened before.
The presentation we did back in February was a terrific presentation, but I don't think you want to hear it again. This is the presentation from the fourth quarter. I didn't notice it when I saw the title slide. Can we take a short pause, and let me make sure the correct presentation isn't loaded on the laptop, and I just launched the wrong one?
Okay. Oh, okay.
I'm back.
Okay.
I know. I come in and everything's all disfunkt.
I was kinda wondering why you were gonna do that 2015 fourth quarter, but I figured that this was gonna lead into the newest, but...
I'm pleased I discovered the mistake before I was halfway through the presentation. Okay. The first goal has to do with our collective efforts to develop a balanced and vibrant economy to improve socioeconomic status. Some things of interest, council was very gracious to attend some ribbon cuttings and grand openings for three businesses, Perfect Teeth, Sap Brothers, and the Seven-Eleven at a hundred and fourth on Highway Two. Those events are important. They're a great way to tell the community that new businesses are open for business, and we appreciate council's help and support at those events. You saw some representatives from the Small Business Resource Center. We're very proud of the Commerce City Small Business Resource Center. They are continually holding trainings to help benefit local businesses in our community. Additionally, many of you attended the Business Appreciation Breakfast on March seventeenth. A hundred and fifty-five attendees were there to help us celebrate the terrific accomplishments of a number of Commerce City businesses. In terms of a look ahead, the Small Business Resource Center is going to have an event tomorrow afternoon to officially open the renovated building. So, I know a number of you will be attending tomorrow. Again, it'll be a great opportunity to highlight the resources that this important facility has for small businesses in our community. Continuing on the theme of developing the local economy, we did have thirty-three prospect inquiries. Again, prospect inquiries are not a guarantee that new economic development will occur, but certainly an increase in prospect inquiries, we do believe, will lead to increased economic investment. So, seeing a steady increase in interest in developing in our community is a very positive sign. Arnest Steel, Incell Steel, did announce their new facility in the Irondale area. Special thanks to Mayor Ford for his efforts to help bring that business to the Commerce City community. And also marijuana businesses is very much on everyone's mind. We are processing the first applications through our new licensing process. We have approved through that process two licenses, and one license has actually been issued. Michelle Claymore and her team collect a great deal of information to keep our finger on the pulse of not only what's going on in the Commerce City economy, but in the Denver metro area and in the region. This chart is a good summary report of key economic indicators that we're tracking to, to measure growth in the business community. Certainly, when you look at the chart, green arrows would be good, whether it's an upward or a downward trend. Green is good. Red is not good. So, the two that are red were showing in a slight increase in office and retail vacancies. So, that's something we're keeping an eye on. The rest of the indicators are trending positively. Either they're trending in the right direction, or the trend is holding steady, which is good news for Commerce City. Development activity continues to be brisk within our community. It's another sign that the economy is continuing to grow at the local level. One item of note, despite the tremendous permit activity, I'm very proud of that inspections completed on time number. We did add, City Council approved in the budget for 2016, an additional new position for an additional building inspector. We've been putting that person to use. We make pretty high-level, level of service commitments. We agree when folks request inspections to turn them around within a guaranteed amount of time, and ninety-eight point three-three percent of the time, we're able to meet that commitment. So, thank you to council for approving that position in the budget. All of these measures indicate the development activity is increasing. So, that's certainly a positive sign for growth in the Commerce City area. It's no surprise to anyone that the housing market continues to be very strong throughout the whole metro area, and it's certainly very strong here in Commerce City. Also, something that we're seeing that's a bit new for our community is some multifamily development. As you all know, multifamily development has been a challenge for our community, and we, we have seen two small projects with multifamily housing get underway within the Commerce City community. Shifting to the City Council goal of creating a financially sound city government to maintain or improve levels of service, some things to highlight. For the first time since 2008, the city's workers' compensation insurance company actually issued a dividend check back to the city. As you know, it's been a, a key area of emphasis for us to be a safer workforce in city government, and this is the best indication so far that those efforts are starting to pay off. Not only are fewer people getting injured, the injuries are less severe, but those reductions save the city and taxpayers money. Related to that, we are kicking off a safety incentive program. There's a saying that what gets rewarded gets done. So, as opposed to talking with employees when they're not following safety protocols, we've initiated a new program to reward employees for doing things safely. So, we're excited about the positive impact that'll have on the organization as well. In the lower right, full-time employee turnover remains pretty steady, between four and five percent. Employers, including the cities and other government agencies, are struggling to find high-quality applicants across the metro area. So, it's a goal of ours to be able to hold steady and not see employee turnover increase. In terms of looking ahead, we will be initiating FOP contract negotiations this month. FOP contracts are traditionally two-year contracts. The current FOP contract will expire at the end of 2016, and both the FOP leadership and the city's team are preparing to initiate negotiations towards the middle of this month. And it won't surprise you that we've already started a tremendous amount of work on the 2017 budget. We're still just barely out of the first quarter of 2016, but because of how time-consuming and how involved the budget process is, we are well underway, beginning our work on the 2017 budget. Regarding our efforts to maintain public infrastructure, to improve community appearance, and encourage private investment, we did begin our annual sweeping operations towards end of, actually towards the end of March. The wintry weather we've had in April has been a bit of a challenge, but those sweeping operations are well underway. We do have an active pavement maintenance program. Thank you to the funding approved by City Council in the 2016 budget. Maria DeAndrea will be before you at next week's study session to walk through with you the areas of focus in the 2016 pavement maintenance program. Also, City Council, many of you were kind enough to attend the groundbreaking ceremony on March thirty-first for the city's only North Metro Fast Track station. Work on that station is well underway. We were also before City Council last week talking about city signage related to that North Metro Line corridor. In our efforts to continually improve the appearance of the Commerce City community, the Neighborhoods, Neighborhood Services Division of Community Development had a very active first quarter. You will notice that overall activity has increased throughout Neighborhood Services. That's a good sign. Property appearance is something that's important to City Council, important to a lot of people in the community that we all speak with. And so, these are clear indications that there's increased activity to improve the appearance of the Commerce City community. On May twenty-third, Pat Buckley and Chris Kramer will be presenting to you in a study session some more background of the city's code enforcement program. So, we hope to get council some additional information and some feedback from council about the quality of our code enforcement efforts. Additionally, as City Council is aware, you authorized in the budget a new full-time position to, amongst other things, help provide steady staff support to the city's youth commission. We opened the position, interviewed a number of folks, but have yet to find a quality candidate. That's a critical position to not only work with the youth commission, but also the city's cultural council and the Quality Community Foundation. So, although we're eager to get the position filled, we also want to find a very high-quality employee that we know will do well in that role. So, we are gonna reopen that position. Mr. Douglas had asked me to send him the position posting and the information about that position. If any of you would like to see that information, in an effort to help spread the word about that position, we would really love your help to access your network of folks within and around the Commerce City community to help generate interest and a fresh pool of applicants. So, I see some heads nodding. We'll make sure we send that information out to all of you. Your help in sharing that information with folks who might be interested would be very, very helpful. very helpful. The police department had a very active quarter. Two items of note that are trends that are increasing, the Part I crimes for 1,000 residents and our response time to Priority One calls. Those are both higher than we'd like them to be, so those are an area of emphasis for the police department going into the second quarter. It's precisely why it's useful to collect this data. It's a great chance. We know we're working hard, but this data tells us whether we're getting the results that we are seeking. One other positive note, another area of emphasis for the police department has been through greater community education to try to reduce the number of vicious animal calls, and we are seeing a positive trend as far as a reduction in vicious animal calls. We continue to see strong increased interest in the city's various means of communicating with the Commerce City community. All of these metrics show steady increases. Media mentions, both in English and Hispanic, are trending positively. We continue to see an increase in Facebook fans and Twitter followers. There are so many different tools we have now to communicate with the Commerce City community, and we see continued interest. So it's important for us to continue to maintain, share quality information, keep it fresh, and it seems to be resulting in continued increase in interest. In terms of a look ahead, you might have seen some information about the Public Safety Citizens Advisory Board. Next week, a community meeting is planned to share information with members of the community that may have an interest in serving. And then last, but certainly not least, it's important to all of us to know that the city's financial health is in good standing, and I would say compared to first-quarter results over the last few years, this is a very positive report on the city's finances. Our revenue is quite a bit ahead of our expenditures. That's always the situation we want to find ourselves in, so that's trending very positively. Our expenses are trending a little lower than what we'd budgeted, and our revenue is a little bit ahead. So that's exactly the situation we want to be in. So that's a very quick, high-level review of a great deal of information that's included in the packet. As always, we're happy to answer any questions tonight, or if you're looking through the information at a later date. If members of the community are looking through the information and have questions, we absolutely encourage folks to reach out to city staff. We're happy to share additional detail about the numbers. So thank you.
All right. Moving on in our agenda, get to administrative council business. Is there any administrative council business this evening? Mr. Douglas?
Thank you. Everything's getting in my way. Sorry about that. I had to forward everybody a couple pictures of some drains over at Frontier Park. People were concerned about there's no grade coverings over those storm drains. I think there's like four or so in the park. Reason why this came before me, someone asked, they were at the park and their child was running, walking away, and just for a second there, they lost sight of the child, and the child was entering inside one of those storm drains. They're not very tall, but they're like, I guess, little pockets of, can I say, as far as holding water and all that, and then it just rains to the other side, but they're all, they're all open. And it's kind of the same way throughout some of the storm drain areas throughout some of these metro districts. They have the runoff from the storm drains, and it goes from the street, and then it collects, and those are open as well. I would like to see if we could get some drain covers over those, just so that we can't have any kids or anyone trying to enter inside those.
If you have just a moment after the meeting, let's connect to make sure we understand.
Okay. I sent her by a picture. You should have a picture in front of you. And then also at Frontier, a lot of people jog around the park, and there's only so much of it lit. Maybe in the near future, look at what the cost would be to add some sort of lighting around there, because people do jog around that park, just for safety concerns.
We can see what information we might have that's readily available to give us some idea of what the cost might be, and that's certainly something City Council can consider as part of the 2017 budget.
Okay. And then I know there was a speed study done, I think it was last year, for either Quebec Street or Seventy Second, I'm trying to remember what street it was, the old Quebec Street and Seventy Second Place. I guess there's been a high amount of kids, well, not even kids, people driving fast around there. And I thought maybe there was a speed study done last year. Just wanted to see if we can get the results of that.
I'm not remembering that offhand, but we can absolutely check.
Okay. And then the last thing Maria had said about the bids came in high for the Chambers Trail. Is there any way on this upcoming, I know we're having a trail update next Monday, if we could discuss Chambers Trail as far as looking at where they're at, what they submitted, and see maybe we could make some changes as far as either the bridge or the side pedestrian bridge over the creek? That could be considered.
Based on Ms. DeAndrea's comments, I'm not sure if they've completed their analysis of the bids that we received. If we're not able to do that on Monday, we'll do that just as soon as possible.
All right.
It's certainly a project we'd like to get underway, and we were disappointed with how high the bids came in.
Right. I could, yeah, if we could talk about that on Monday, maybe add that to the trail report, to see where we're at with that.
We'll see if that analysis is far enough along where we can talk knowledgeably about why we think those bids came in higher than we expected.
Okay. I appreciate that.
Anyone else? Seeing none, move on to reports. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did send out a city manager's report just prior to the start of the meeting tonight. We do have an update about the Public Safety Citizens Advisory Board. I mentioned during the first-quarter update, we do have a community meeting planned for next Wednesday from six to seven. The application process is now open for members of the community that have an interest in serving. That'll be open until May 25th. Again, our hope is that interested folks that have questions will attend next Wednesday so that the chief and his staff can answer questions about the nature of the work that the board will be doing. Also, the police department, we have an update on the police department program that will ticket kids for good deeds. We also have an update to Mr. Douglas's question about the timing of signals at Highway Two and Ninety-Sixth and Highway Two and One Hundred and Fourth. So let us know if you have additional questions about that, and we will be sending out some information to the community about the city's trash and recycling program. We've been doing a mailer on a regular basis, and the spring 2016 mailer will include information about the Adams County Chemical Household Roundup, Household Chemical Roundup. That'll be Saturday, May 7th, this Saturday, and the city's Green Yard Waste Drop-Off Event, which is scheduled for Saturday, May 14th. So please reach out if you have any questions.
Can you have staff send those dates out to us, so we have them on our calendar, please?
For the, for the two events?
Yep.
We can do that, sir.
Thank you. All right. City Attorney.
I have nothing to report, Mr. Mayor.
No report? You did a lot of talking already tonight.
I think you're done with me for the evening.
Yeah, you're good. We'll give you a pass tonight. All right, I'll get into my report.
We also, administrative council business, we have to make a motion for you to sign some letters of veto support to the governor.
Okay. For the stuff the judge talked to us about?
Right.
And I wasn't in the ledge meeting, but let, I'll tell you what, let me give my report, and then I'll come back to administrative council business. Rotary, Leadership Commerce City Event, which was very good, by the way. Thank you for all that participated. The Telephone Town Hall, RTD Event at DIA, and I took my guest was Mr. Bullock. And it was, it was a great time. Got to, got to ride the train. I'm excited about Commerce City Station opening and having the flexibility for people to be able to, to leave right here from Commerce City and be able to get back and forth to the airport or downtown or wherever they want to go with mass rapid transit. Area Boards, myself and Mr. Teeter attended the area boards meeting. I think it went pretty well. Just updates, the one thing that I was a little bit dissatisfied with is that when we originally put together the area boards meeting, it was for board members, elected officials, to be able to get together and tell their story about what's going on within their organization. Unfortunately, me and Rick were the only two elected officials there. It's nice to have a water board member there to hear the updates, so he knows, so you know they're getting the information that you're trying to get across instead of having it to be second-hand. The same with the fire district. There was nobody from the board there, only, only staff. So it would be really nice if we could get the area boards to start really acting as boards. I know the water district just received, or just got a new board member, Michael Scanlon, and I think it'd be very interesting for especially newer board members to be able to be there to understand how it works and the relationships that we have intended to build on by having the area boards. The school district wasn't in attendance, but most of the time, they do have a board member there with them. So I just thought, you know, it'd be nice to mention, it'd be, it'd be a pleasure to be able to interact with some of the board members from the other agencies within our community at the area boards meetings. All right. Farewell lunch for Mayor Charles Bailey. Myself and Mr. Bullock went out and congratulated him and wished him well on his new endeavors. And then we were able to make it back that afternoon in time to be able to get to Rotary. Then we had the Adams Fourteener Fest, which was great. It was nice to see all the recipients of the scholarships. And then NADA Board Meeting, myself and Rick also attended the NADA Board Meeting. There's a lot going on with studies for the Highway eighty-five and two-seventy interchange, a lot of new stuff going on with new transponders that you can slide to on or off, depending if you're going down Thirty-Sixth or I-25 and getting into one of those managed lanes. So pretty interesting new technology. Then we had the Adams County Youth Mayor's Award, however you say it, ACYMA Awards Dinner, which was, which was really nice. A lot of really great kids that got the recognition that they deserved. Our award winner from Commerce City was Angelique Vargas, a very nice lady, very nice young lady, and I think she's doing a lot to improve her, her life. And it was interesting because out of all of, all of the different communities, Thornton had like eight or nine kids that were being recognized. They just had a ton of recipients. So I don't know what they did to get out and find these kids, but they were all very deserving, and it was interesting to see Westminster and Thornton had so many that were being recognized. And then yesterday, I attended the National Day of Prayer Event at the Henderson Community Church, and Paulo Diaz as well was there and gave a update on where the city's at, what we're doing, where construction projects are, what I feel are some of the bigger issues facing this community in the long term. And Paulo got a chance to get up and talk about things as well. So I want to thank the Henderson Community Church for making that available for us. The National Day of Prayer is actually this Thursday, but we recognized it because it was the Sunday before. So thank you to Henderson Community Church. And I also know that many of you were able to go to the time, from time-to-time luncheon that the Historical Society puts on, and many of you probably know that I was slated to be out of town Thursday night through Sunday evening. So I gave my tickets for the time-to-time lunch back to staff to make sure the table would get filled, and then my fishing tournament was canceled, and I stayed home anyway. But I thought about you yesterday, having a good time without me, but that's all right. I think I've been to all of them, so I missed one, and, you know, I really wished I would have been there. I enjoy what the Historical Society does. That's a great event, that they have, have really grown into something great in our community. So that's my report. Does anybody have anything they'd like to add to that report? Mr. Bullock?
Oh, yes. I wanted to mention that yesterday at the time-to-time luncheon, one of the honorees was Cal Fulenwider, and he, they gave a detailed history of from when his grandfather started land as agriculture, and then the father turned it into commercial and retail and everything. But if you ever want to hear a history of a majority of the land in Adams County, that would be a really good history to hear, because the Fulenwider family were instrumental in a lot of Commerce City. You would not believe how much of Commerce City they owned before they start parceling it off, and they parceled it off in a way where it had to be used to the, how they wanted it. They didn't just let a developer come in and take it and do what they want and leave. They made sure they had quality developers. But if anybody wants to get that history, it's available to the Historical Society.
Great, thank you. Is there anything else to add to the report? Steve, did you have something?
Yes, I attended time-to-time luncheon as well. Terry Smith from Stout Street, she got an award. She was very surprised that she received the award. She has seen many businesses, businesses of the year, get an award, and she's very surprised. She got an award. She actually is, is, represents Stout Street Foundation. We were there, over there on Friday, or Thursday, for the fortieth, fortieth anniversary for recovery of community, and very well attended. Councilmember, Councilwoman Elliott was there, and Mayor Pearl Tim, Mayor Pearl Tim Rene Ableck was there as well. So it was a great, it was a great celebration, despite having some, some bad weather. And also attended RTD Station last week, the commuter rail. The Commerce City shared a booth over there off of Central Park Boulevard, and that was well-attended as well. Very fun, and I got to ride the train with my, with my, my daughters and grandson, and the train is wonderful. It's, it's really nice to have that choice as part, as part of the public transportation, and I'm also looking forward to having our station in 2018. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else have anything they'd like to add? Let's see here. Councilwoman Carson, did you have something?
I did. I just wanted to share a few words Tuesday. I was over at the high school, Adams City Fourteen High School, and, and I got to tell you what a program they put on for the welcoming of the eighth graders. They had thirty-six stations there, and it was a madhouse. And Ms. Elliott, I got to meet some of the students you've been working with and see the award-winning cakes. You've done an excellent job, so thank you. And then I also wanted to give a big thank you to the classified employees there at Adams Fourteen. They, over the school year, working with the First Book Program, have completed their, their goal of handing out eighteen thousand books from preschool to twelfth grade at a value of about three hundred thousand dollars. So it was a lot of hard work, but, but great job. And then before I close, Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers and grandmothers in our city. Yes, I just reminded Paulo he needs to go to the store. Yes, I just reminded Paulo, he needs to go to the store, so, anyway, thank you.
All right. Mr. Teeter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was going to ask Brian a question a little earlier. How did we do with the prescription drug retrieval?
Five bucks. I have no idea, but we will collect some information and include it in next week's city manager update.
Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Diaz?
First, my wife would like to thank you for the Free Dumpster Day, because she was able to get rid of some stuff. When I say she was able to get rid of, she put it on the side, and I had to bring it myself. So thank you for that. The other thing is, I know Angela from the Metro North Chamber was here just a little bit ago, and I'm not sure if we were aware of this, but the next business after Hours that the Metro North Chamber of Commerce is hosting will actually be at the BBVA Compass on One Hundred and Fourth and Chambers, and that's scheduled for Wednesday, May 18th, starting at 5:30. So Brian, I know sometimes you guys send us invites to ribbon cuttings and events for the business, for the Metro North Chamber and the Brighton Chamber. Do you know if you'll be getting an invite to that, and if so, maybe just have it on our radar? Okay, perfect. Just because I know it's going to be in Commerce City, so, thank you.
Councilwoman Elliott?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to reiterate, with yesterday at the luncheon for the time-to-time luncheon for Terry Smith with Stout Street, she had actually won two awards as outstanding businesswoman and then outstanding business of the year. So I just wanted to give a shout out and accolades. That's a very good organization within our community, and it's very well-loved. You could just see the outpouring of love yesterday. It was actually very emotional with listening to some of the stories that were shared. But on another note, wanted to mention this, and I don't know if this is the right forum to do that, or, well, yeah, right forum, but I was approached, actually a few times now, by one of the, or actually two members of the Rotary Club, that I've expressed interest of becoming a member, and I know we've kind of had a little bit of sidebar conversation about that, but I would like to know council's, well, I'd like council's direction or acceptance of myself being able to become a Rotary member?
Okay.
And what would the process be for that?
Process would be that you would have to ask the council to approve another member of this council to be considered to be a Rotarian, and then me and Renee would help you through the process of sponsoring you and getting you to be a Rotarian. But for the financial side of it, for taking care of the lunch and stuff on the city's end, you'd have to get approval from the council, correct, Brian?
Yes, it would be appropriate for council to approve the expenditure. Robert and I were just talking. If three of you attend regularly, we have to make sure it doesn't create an open meetings law issue. Anything you can?
Yes, the attendance of up to three or more elected officials, so we just want to look into that and make sure that if there's discussion of public business, that we wouldn't be putting a Rotary at any...
Sure. Well, and you know, at Rotary, we're not discussing public business anyway. However, it would be like us going to a launch or other event, which many of us are at, and it's not considered a public meeting, because we're not dealing with city business. It's Rotary business, which would be separate, in my opinion. But I would like you to look into that, make sure that it's okay. And if it is okay, then I would need a motion to allow Councilwoman Elliott, based on the findings of the city attorney on the open records, rules and regulations, to allow her to be a Rotarian. Is there a motion? Mr. Bullock?
We'll make that motion. Based on the findings of the city attorney, which should be okay, I would make the motion for any of you to become Rotarians. You know, I would love to see any of you become Rotarians, but I make the motion.
Okay, so I have a motion. Is there a second? Paulo?
I will second that motion.
A motion and a second, to allow Councilwoman Elliott to join myself and the Mayor Pro Tim as Rotarians on behalf of the city of Commerce City?
And Troy.
And Troy. That's right, and Troy. On behalf of the city of Commerce City for the organization, pending the outcome of the research that Robert will do. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion's carried, and I hope the outcome is good.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
All right. Anything else to do with, with the...
City business.
No. Reports. Reports, and then we're going back to council administrative business. Anything else on reports? Mr. Teeter, you want to report on something?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I guess it'd be appropriate for me to also let the audience out there know, the two firefighter people that were honored this weekend, Sunday, time-to-time luncheon, Curley Edwards was the original one. He was a founder of the, back in 1941, when they started the fire department, and they told a large history about his background and what his contributions was of the fire department back in the days. And Kevin Phillips, which is now the Fire Marshal, correction, yes, the Fire Marshal, was also awarded, an award for his things that he has accomplished over the years. He was involved with the School District 14, awarded directors, and as well as the fire department. Thank you.
Tell who else was honored. Our former commander... Mr. Bullock, would you like the chance to speak? Please click your button so that I can see your light come up, and I will take you in order like everybody else. Mr. Teeter, do you have anything else to add?
You know, I don't know what Renee's talking about right now, but you can fill it in.
All right. Mr. Bullock, do you have anything you'd like to say now? As far as reports?
As far as reports, also honored yesterday at the time-to-time luncheon was former Commander Chuck Baker, which is now the Chief of Police up in Cody, Wyoming. He was also honored yesterday at the time-to-time luncheon.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Any other reports? All right, going back to council administrative business. We have some letters that need to be, I'm going to turn it over to Councilwoman Elliott, let her handle it.
Thank you, Mayor. These three letters were presented to us at our legislative meeting, and basically they're draft letters for your review, and I have these here if you'd like to look at these, but these are in regards to three different House bills, House Bill 16-1231. I won't go into detail, just let you read the letters, but the second bill would be House Bill 161311, and lastly, House Bill 161309. And it was suggested that these would be obviously reviewed with your signature, but these would be held pending the outcome of Wednesday's legislative session.
All right. Mr. Douglas?
Yes, also is a letter for HB, House Bill 161231.
Set that first.
Just for the red light camera.
House Bill 16-1231, House Bill 16-1311, and House Bill 16-1309. I'm open for a motion. Mr. Douglas?
Making a motion for Mayor Sean Fort to support the letter to Governor Hippel Luber on these three bills.
All right. Is there a second? Mr. Teeter?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, to allow my signature to be on these three letters to be sent to the Governor of Colorado concerning the bills in question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion's carried. Now, is there any other council administrative business?
No.
URA, right?
No, no, URA. If there be no further council business this evening, I would like to say Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers out there in Commerce City, and we are adjourned. Okay, have you... Laurie, you need me to sign those letters while I got them up here?
Oh, those are drafts.
Oh, those are drafts. All right, so when we get the letters, get them up to Lisa and I'll sign them.
They'll come to from Michelle.
Oh, from Michelle, all right, as long as they get there.
Those are just copies.
I just didn't...
Thanks, Mayor.
Okay. You ever had your, either one of you have your case break?
Oh, yeah, I've had to replace mine twice.
Okay.
They fall apart. I mean, you'll be sitting there, and I'll go, boom.
Boom, yeah.
Copart here, Mayor Pro Tim Bullock needs a new laptop case. Can you have Lisa iPad? All right, Lisa, get him.